Hi, Frank.
Hey, the time now is five thirty-one. We apologize. We had a little slight technical hiccup. But we now have a quorum. Second twenty twenty-three work session of the City of Walsenburg City Council. Barr, would you call for the role, please?
Here. Ms. Mays?
Here.
Mr. Behill?
Yeah.
The site?
Here.
Mr. Martinez? Mr. Martinez? Mr. Jennings?
Thank you, Ms. Barr. The topic for tonight's discussion is the finance debt repayment and performance. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Moore.
Do you all have a copy of the? That report I've done? So, um. It was last October I ran the information for twenty twenty-one since we were working on the audit still at that time. And the numbers that I put on the twenty twenty-one incorporated all of the lenders that we do have here at the city. However, the USDA debt is not relevant for payments. That was paid strictly from the Northland GID. I've reconfigured the twenty twenty-one numbers to show those specifically segregated so that the debt that applies to the utility is reported separate from the Northland's debt. The twenty twenty-one numbers now can be compared to the twenty twenty-two numbers for how we're performing in terms of getting the debt payments satisfied with our lenders. The twenty twenty-one numbers show that we're collecting through our utility system only sixty-three percent of the amount that we're supposed to be paying for water debt. It does look better for the sewer debt. We're collecting one hundred and fifteen percent of that since the water and the sewer funds are combined in order to serve the debts. We're capturing seventy-one percent total right now, so anything else is being paid for out of just general revenues to make sure those debt payments are made. In twenty twenty-two, the numbers aren't any better. Really running about the same at sixty-two percent collection for water, one hundred and fourteen percent collection for sewer, and we're still at seventy percent of satisfaction for the lenders in terms of our performance on the debt. So the debt covenants that we have with the lenders states that we're supposed to collect one hundred and twenty percent in revenues in order to meet our covenants. And in twenty twenty, we had achieved that level with the work on the twenty twenty-one audit. The auditors identified the failure to collect adequate debt, and we had to notify all the lenders for the city. The USDA was satisfied with our progress at this point that we're working on a rate study to achieve the balance with our collections. The Colorado Water Conservation Board was simply asking for us to keep them notified on a periodic basis how we're doing. The Bank Midwest lender was alarmed and wanted to meet with our CPA team and review what our action plan is in order to restore our debt covenant in order to maintain a good standing with their organization. So at this point in time, the reporting to the lenders that we are working on the rate study. Currently, we're working with the Colorado Rural Water Association. Several of their team are meeting with us. They're putting together an asset management plan. The structure of the asset management plan allows us to identify all of our repairable pieces over time. And using our rate profiles, we can identify what we're able to accomplish in terms of the debt payments, repair and replacement of the system, and what that burden will be on the Walsen bird population. So it's a really comprehensive system. It's very impressive what they have. It's not ready yet. We're barely halfway into getting the data ready for that system. Of course, I'll be tied down for the next couple of months with the twenty twenty-two audit, so for May and June. After that, ideally, we can get the rate, that asset management pan, plan complete by July, be able to discuss then with the council. But we may want to set for rates in the water and sewer system. This has nothing to do with the gas utility. And we'll have to, of course, be able to satisfy the water amount and be able to collect that debt. That's just a specific amount that is split across the number of water taps that are active and paying service. So that's going to change from year to year. The asset management plan will allow us to adapt from year to year. We won't necessarily have to be hiring third-party reviewers to come in and do an analysis. If that asset management plan is complete, it'll allow the council and the administration to see exactly what is going on in terms of being able to meet our obligations for the system and for our lenders. From there, I'll open it up to any questions. Absolutely.
Oh, Jim, I don't understand what, what is your reasoning or what is your opinion of why it is decreasing?
So I have no idea specifically at this point what the profile is. I haven't spent enough time here at the city to look at the history.
Well, if I look from twenty-one to twenty-two, it decreased from sixty-three percent to six, you know, one percent in both categories. But the so it seems to me, I don't know if you have the the total number of, of meters. It hasn't decreased in meters. I would assume that it's increased, so that should be going up, I would think.
It, it really is tied directly to the number of paying customers, so.
Oh, you're gonna, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so the meters, the meter count is literally the bottom line on this. So we must have lost either a number of customers to account for the one percent decrease or people did not pay. So we'd have a number of accounts that are shut off and would need to be collected. So in terms of either bad debt or future collections, that's one of the elements that could impact that. That's not an actual meter count revenue. Of course, if we had more meters in the system, that would certainly bring that revenue directly up.
Sure. Well, don't we have reports on how many, don't you do monthly reports on how many active meters there are? Does the system do that? How many active meters you, you have paying?
In fact, I put the number on the twenty twenty-two report. You can ignore those numbers on the twenty twenty-one. They're, they're copied over. But so in the city.
Yeah, sixteen thirty-four?
Thirteen thirty-four and seventy-three in the county. And for sewer debt, we have fourteen ninety-three in the city and fourteen in the county.
But we don't know for twenty-one?
No, I don't. I did go back and dig those numbers up.
That would be an interesting information for us.
Like a missing piece of the puzzle.
Because, of course, that would tell us. I can't, I mean, I can hardly believe that we've lost.
Enough to make that much of a difference.
I, I have looked around and I thought we were gaining some of the vacant houses.
This is what we have brought in. So whether it's, it's give or take five, six, ten meters, or whether it's, it's the failure to pay, that would take some time to research, and I'm not necessarily at the point where I can spend additional time in that sort of detailed research.
Do you have a, do you, I don't know, do you guys provide a, a monthly report on delinquents thirty, sixty, ninety day?
The council's not been receiving that since I've been working here.
Did we receive that?
That's up to the council.
I personally believe that would be beneficial to us. It would give us an idea of what our, our loss is. And then possibly, if that's a big number, I mean, obviously, we don't have. It, it's not any, any names. It's just a number, right?
A rate and age receivable that does not have the names on them.
Yeah, I, I think that would be beneficial for us. If anybody else.
Also a number, money amount.
Well, no, that's what it would be. Yeah, that's what it would be.
Now, the age receivables will show you the thirty, sixty, and ninety day outstanding debts, any that are over.
What is it over ninety?
We have a lot of accounts that are, have been turned off for lack of payment for periods of time, so it's fairly ugly.
Well, something we have to know, right?
Yeah, so we can certainly provide that. I'll do it once a month at the second meeting of the month.
Yeah, I think that would be good. Thank you. And then something else that I, I would like to know about this. So LEAP has nothing to do, and this is strictly water and sewer, and LEAP has nothing to do with water and sewer. It's only gas. Is that correct?
Uh, no, we do get some LEAP assistance for water.
Oh, okay.
Don't know. It, it doesn't seem to be fairly substantial. The gas assistance is, is greater than the, the water. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Each month or a season, they just started doing it this season, helping customers water. It's minimal, five to ten customers a month. But that will help.
Because it was normally set up for heating with the water and, yeah.
So that, that receivable, though, on the debt isn't necessarily volume, but just counts and collected.
Right, yeah, we could, we had a pro operation that closed down in twenty twenty-two and of course, the city in the first part of the year had a policy of not shutting off customers, so.
Even gross?
Well, it was customers in general, so, so we did actually shut them off. But they had racked up quite a bit of, of outstanding amounts due before the different taps were all closed off. So that was an unfortunate episode there. Otherwise, a large number of the city was struggling with payments. You know, for the COVID period, that was probably the time when the issues may have begun with timely payments because that period of time, which I'm not specifically familiar with, I know the city was not closing off utility accounts while COVID was an active issue in the city. So I think that affected twenty twenty and twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-one to some degree. And then it rolled into twenty twenty-two with the billing disaster. So at that point, we couldn't shut people down because our billing was running a month behind in time. So we had no idea where accounts stood in a timely basis until about mid-year. And that's at the point where we could start beginning to actively shut accounts down that were, had non-payment status. And at that point, that included a lot of customers, both commercial and residential.
So have any of those accounts been caught up?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we would have to look at that aged report to, to see what the actual profile is. But a lot of accounts are restored. We're collecting some, obviously, some have not ever been restored because a lot of accounts develop some large balances.
So was the COVID money, I thought there was a period of time when the Wal, City of Walsen Bird didn't really have it planned for the, that final amount of money for COVID, and they had turned it over to Council of Governments. And Council of Governments was actually using that money to help people with their bills, I thought. Did we?
Yeah, we did.
Is that some of the HARP, HARP money?
No, no, the.
That was COVID.
The original.
City received.
It was the original ones.
It was.
It, the city, it, Cogberry turned the majority of that money back to the city.
Yeah, the city received, I, I can't remember exactly what it was, maybe something in the range of a hundred thousand dollars, like.
They didn't, they didn't, Cog didn't expend much of it, most of it.
So the city spent portion of that money, transferred the balance over to the Council of Governments, and then the Council of Governments transferred, I think most of that was me right back to the city. And, you know, when I look through some of those records, the city actually even gave like the school district.
I think it went to the school.
Well, you know, and of course, the school district received like the same kind of money that the city received. So I don't know why the city gave any money to the school district at all, but.
I think it was like kids programs because I, there was like three, I think it was like three or four different, there was like several applicants.
Yeah, well, of course, the school, you know, got, you know, hundreds of. So, so whereas the city didn't get anything close to what the school would have received in COVID relief funds, but.
That first set of money had such tight guidelines on it.
Right.
I think that was part, and I think that was why Cog struggled to move it the way they did too because of the guidelines that were on that original COVID money that came out, yeah.
Eligibility requirements. So, um, so that money was, was finally overspent as twenty twenty-two started. So it turned out that the city had a three thousand dollar over expenditure by the time twenty twenty-two started. So those funds were done, and I don't, I know businesses had gotten a lot of distributions from the city. And there's a, a number of records of payments to the local, you know, commercial interest. But from there, I don't know that residents got specific assistance from the city.
No, we just gave businesses.
Well, it sounds like the citizens had got some money.
Uh, yeah, I don't know how the city was handling it at that point in time, so the guidelines were what the administrator at the time was doing.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Mr. Behill?
Not on this. I do have a question on gas. Agulor getting caught up?
Uh, I would not put it in those terms. There, they haven't even made a recent payment. So, um, so we'll need to check with the attorney on the status of, of what we can and cannot do in terms of the community of utility users at Agulor.
Yeah, we'll do something.
Yeah, the, the last conversation, the administrator was, was fairly adamant. She did not feel that a large portion of twenty twenty-two was payable to the city of Walsberg.
Look at it historically. It was dead on. I mean.
It, it really is incredibly.
Yes. I mean, there, I mean, I think that, you know, all of the documentation that you provided, it was dead on. There was no issues with that. Yeah, there was some wonkiness with that November, December.
Right.
But it didn't maybe show the thing, but the charge was clear that it was, it was clean. And again, I've said this before, I struggle with, we give our residents, our customers, a different set of rules than we do the. a different set of rules than we do the city of Aguilar. I understand their community, I get that. But, you know, for to hold one resident here, if they don't pay their bill, we cut them off. To let the city, the town of Aguilar do whatever they want, like, it's double standards, and it's not right. And we can't just keep kicking this can down the road, like, we really need to lay it down to them.
Kicking it, so so it's it's a matter of progress on the legal front. There's nothing, you know, I don't have any legal expertise.
Right, I understand that.
Have to solve that for us, and in the meantime, we don't have, the state would would not allow us to shut off two hundred gas users in another community.
But what if we shut up? What if we shut off two hundred users in the city?
Well.
What's the difference?
Users in Aguilar would be paying their bills, so so we can't. We cannot legally shut them off.
Well, they're paying to Aguilar, but not to us.
Pardon?
They're paying to Aguilar, but not to us.
It's it's the town that's liable for that amount of money. It is not the users in the town, and the users in the town who are receiving the gas that's flowing through that pipeline, and it's flowing. You know, the town would shut them off if they didn't pay their bill.
They probably have.
Just just like us, so. But that being a whole community, that's under PUC guidelines, I know nothing about those. That's legal expertise specifically.
So what's the delay, though? Why isn't our attorney on that?
I don't know what kind of timeframe it takes, so we'll have to ask the attorney when she gets here.
So what kind of so on some of these bad debts, what kind of, what's the next step? Do we go to collections? Do we, not Aguilar, like locally?
After water.
There's all these accounts that people haven't paid, there's this girl that hasn't paid. What's our next steps? How do we collect that money?
So for water and sewer, that's not as difficult as it may seem, tho- those amounts can be filed with the county for property tax collection. And so they'll either have to pay it.
So are we doing that? Are we taking those steps to do that?
I have not had an opportunity yet to do that.
I mean, I feel like the longer we keep playing, I mean, it's just like when we clean that property, we're supposed to put a lien, then we did it, and then it.
But those those balances don't go away, so the and the property is there, they attach to the property. So as soon as I learned the process of getting that squared away.
But my fear is, like, like a grow, if it doesn't get put on their property, they sell the property, you ain't put anything on that property, it's done. Like, it it's imperative to file those.
Yeah, for those properties that that transact in the meantime.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that's a loss. And and we have a number of other liens that need to be placed that have to do with code enforcement issues as well, so. So once the lien process is is started, we can get that on there, and I'll be able to start that by July when the audit is complete. So that's a all-new routine for me.
I should, I think that should be checked on, because sometimes there's a a timeframe that you have to file that that lien, or you you can.
And that that may be true.
No, I'm not sure if it is true, because I've done some leads.
So so if 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 it's more than a year, I think we're still fairly good, because the city didn't start.
I'd be checking on it real quick to see what the timeframe is, so that you you don't lose those that indebtedness.
Right, yeah, once, once the accounts were shut off, that started in what, uh, October, September, when we started closing accounts down, so. So we're not a year out from the point in time when we started uh, closing accounts.
And it's from the last day, the last contact?
The last day, probably.
Most likely, because that's, otherwise, they were still active and not eligible for a lien to be filed.
So how does the city absorb, I mean, if these numbers are cost burdened to fund, you know, fifty two thousand in twenty one, forty seven thousand in twenty two. How do we absorb that? That's a lot of money.
Yeah, that's a substantial amount of money, so.
Almost a hundred grand in those two years.
Yeah, well, that's not the only thing costing the city, of course, you know, so.
As I'm saying, for all those years, you know, the city paid the gas because we were paying the wrong rate, we were in charging sales tax, so, I mean, the city's already ate up all that debt. Like, where does it give? Like, where do we just not have any money, and then we just continue to spend and spend and spend and spend and spend?
But the routine is supposed to be analysis of the rates every year. So each year, the city council will set a new rate structure for the utility bills. And then the amount for cost of the supply production, the amount for the distribution system, and the amount for the debt can be evaluated, put onto the bills, and then we should be breaking even at that point. So the process, the ordinance says council will review the rates once a year. And I don't believe that the city councils reviewed utility rates. The gas rate last was set in twenty eighteen. And I don't think water and sewer, I think they were set in twenty sixteen last. So so we're looking at rate structures that go back in time and don't have any accountability for our costs or or uh, burden.
That's just bad business.
Yeah.
So we have a couple of minutes left. Does anybody else have any comments, counsel, that you would like addressed?
So on this same report that you gave us, you have Northlands on there. Let's talk about that for a minute. So are we breaking even on your, are we, or is that Northland included in here?
So the city has not collected on on hedge amounts or PIF amounts that were outstanding for the last four years, so is something that I have started the process on. So I am not.
But we go back and collect for those years we have not collected for.
Yes, so so I met with the attorney and the CPA to identify what the enforcement process is going to look like. So the attorney's has time to prepare. So if we normally would bill, and I don't know why we need to bill, but normally we would bill in July. And they would pay in in some cases, and in some cases not, when you look at the record. So but all of those, when you look at the agreements, which I have started reading through, CPA has already read through. I don't know how long the attorney has gotten at this point. But it appears that the agreements are fairly strong and and very enforceable, so I feel confident that the PIF money that has not been paid can be collected in full. Edge money can be collected in full. And unfortunately, other element is the sales tax, and I follow that, it's been allocated properly over time.
I mean, again, you know, these businesses could be collecting the PIF. I know some of them are collecting the PIF. What are they doing with that money? This money just sits in their accounts and
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, like, I I just get so frustrated, like, the city, it's like, yeah, don't pay them, whatever, let them come after us. Like, when do we get to the point where it's like, look, you need to pay what you owe?
And those PIF amounts are not supposed to be billed by the city. They're supposed to be filed either.
That's my, that's what I'm saying, but they know nobody's enforcing, so they just keep on, oh, just get this money. You know, and when you're out there and you shop out there and you get.
You see it.
Right, I mean, I was just at a hotel in Greeley. It clearly said on there, PIF. I knew what my PIF amount was. Here, they don't. It doesn't say that. You don't know that.
So.
It put it on our account. Okay, so we're going to bring this to a close. It is six o'clock. With council's permission, do we need a quick couple of minute break before we commence into?
I just feel we never get anything solved. Talk about it, we know what needs to get done.
Back to my question, do you need a quick break before we, all right, the work session is adjourned?
It is, with no resolution, I guess it's done.
It is six PM. We'd like to call the City of Walthamburg regular meeting to the session.
Ms. Martinez?
Here.
Ms. Sykes?
Here.
Ms. Mills?
Yeah.
Ms. Mays?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Jennings? Mr. Jennings?
He's not going to be here this week.
Thank you, Ms. Barr. Mr. Veho, would you leave some pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag
of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is standing one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I hear a second. Motion dies for lack of a second. It is the pleasure of the council.
I'll move to approve the agenda with one change. I'd like to go into the executive session.
To state the reason for your executive session, sir?
The rest, all the things that are on here, I want to go in and talk about them.
Believe you need to specify and name what it is, sir.
Okay, conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section twenty four six four oh two four B. For discussion of a personnel matter under CRS section twenty four six four oh two four F, and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of the city council or any elected official, the appointment, any person to fill an office of the city council or an elected official or personal politi- policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations under CRS section twenty four six four oh two four E.
Um, so we're gonna need to notice any executive sessions that want to go under twenty four hours before and have it on the agenda. I understand that council is wanting an update on one of these matters. I don't think that it's appropriate for an executive session topic. I'm not sure what the other topics are that we're wanting to go into. We're gonna have to notice that twenty four hours before.
That's something new to me.
What is new to you?
That we needed twenty four hour notice on it. Were you contacted about it twenty four hours ahead of time?
I'll possibly wanting an update on the emergency, but it's an appropriate topic for an executive session.
So I I apologize, I didn't understand your answer. Were you contacted requesting an executive session?
Yes, I spoke to the city administrator about providing an update on the topic.
Okay, thank you.
Pleasure of the board. Question at hand is the current existing agenda. Entertain a motion to approve.
I make motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Right here a second. Motion on the table made by Ms. Sykes to approve the agenda as presented, a second by Mr. Montoya. Is there any further, uh, Mr. Mart-? Mr. Martinez, something?
Yes, that's right.
Um, is there any further discussion? Mr. Veho? Any discussion? Mr. Eckhart?
Not at this time.
Sykes?
No.
Martinez?
Nope.
Ms. Mays? Ms. Barr, call for the vote, please.
No.
Mr. Eckhart?
No.
Yes.
Veho?
Oh.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes. I'll adjourn, I guess. I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, I don't, what's your advice, ma'am?
You want to adjourn the meeting and continue all of the items for tonight's agenda to the next meeting, then.
What, yeah, so the motion denied, is is that our only option?
No, you can make another motion.
Pardon me?
You can make another motion. Like, someone can make a motion to and change something on there. If if there's another motion for the agenda that's agreeable to the council, we can make one.
So just to reiterate, we've had a motion for the agenda as presented. We've had a motion with executive sessions that were noted by the attorney that they have to be noticed twenty four hours ahead, and I'd like to point out that this agenda that has been posted clearly identified that there's no executive session this evening, so um, based upon that, that's traditionally we have approached the notice period.
So my understanding was, and I believe it was Mr. Daniels that had explained it, was in a prior council that we put executive session on there at all times. And if we needed something that we had to go into executive session, that is why it's on there. Whoever chose to put there's no executive session on here, that was not something that is not my understanding on how council wanted to do that, because if you remember, Ms. Davis, that was not on there, and Mr. Daniel brought that to all of our attention, that executive session always had to be on there for, in case we had to go into executive session, so that's what I'm saying, I don't understand this back and forth where you're saying twenty four hours, our prior attorney didn't say that. Apparently somewhere in the past, council set it up that we can have it on the agenda so that if we needed an agenda, uh, needed to go into it.
Yeah, I understand that was not the practice before, but under Title twenty four, you need to announce the topic with sufficient detail twenty four hours in advance, along with the posting of any other, just like you post any other notices. Um, if you don't sufficiently give notice of the topic and for which you're going under executive session for, you're not giving the public notice. It's it's um, subject to a court request, and it's subject to being public. So I I'm really, I'm looking out for counsel and giving you that advice. We've gotten a lot of court requests lately.
So it was your, excuse me, I'm sorry. So it's it's your recommendation then? And since you've been the attorney, that it always states that no executive session? I'm just wanting clarification, because I don't know.
Yeah, it's fine to keep this stock language in here, but what we've been doing the past meetings is, once we know what the topic is, putting that topic next to a particular statute that we need to cite.
Okay.
Twenty four hours in advance.
Okay. I just want to be clear.
Yeah. Some other update that you're looking for, or some kind of guidance that you're looking for, I can certainly write the council a memo on that and email it to you.
I mean, I'm just, that was not my understanding, and then all of a sudden I hear this tonight, like, this is the first time that I've heard this twenty four hour notice thing.
We have been on multiple occasions.
I don't recall being a part of that conversation.
Specifying the need to specify the intent.
And I understand that, I get that, but I'm just saying, I don't know, I just, I feel like rules change and we find out sitting here, and it's just frustrating.
Well, that that's always been the statute, but since I've been the attorney, making sure that we follow that statute.
I appreciate that very much.
I will change my vote because I don't want to let this just go.
So, I'm sorry, you'll need to need to have a motion on the floor, or a new motion.
Listen to the agenda as it stands.
The motion on the floor is to accept the agenda as presented. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
That motion made by Mr. Martinez to approve the agenda as presented, second by Mr. Veho. Is there any further discussion? During that, Ms. Barr, the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Veho?
Yes.
May?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Eckhart?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Barr. Consent consent agenda approval, item D, a consent agenda allows expedited approval of items that do not require city council. Consent, consent agenda approval, item D, a consent agenda allows expedited approval of roofing items that do not require city council discussion. A council member wishing to discuss a specific consent agenda item may make that request prior to approval of the consent agenda. The mayor will then move that item to the regular agenda where it may be discussed.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Martinez, second by Ms. Mays. Discussion? Mays, Jim? Mr. Martinez?
Nope.
Ms. Sykes?
No.
Dr. Eckert?
No.
Mr. Veho? Ms. Bark, call for the vote?
Veho?
Yes.
Ms. Mays?
Yes.
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 Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Item E, city council minutes approval. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three city council regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes. For April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Martinez to approve the April. Eighteenth, twenty twenty-three regular city council meetings, second by Mr. Veho. Any further discussion? Mr. Martinez?
No.
Ms. Sykes?
No.
Dr. Eckert?
No.
Veho?
No.
Ms. Mays? Ms. Bark, call for the vote, please?
Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Ms. Mays? Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Item F, staff reports. Do you have in your packets, the staff report from city attorney? Ms. Vera, do you have anything that you would like to add this evening?
The other thing I have is that I have a draft of the sheriff IGA. We're working on that, we're working on getting that out.
We'll copy that.
Would you?
I'd like to.
May I ask what the. Standard procedure is? For your communication, when do you include council? I, I see on the report that you have correspondence. I don't know what to expect. So do you include the council? Do we now have to request it? What is the procedure?
Um, I mean, I don't know that there's a set procedure. I think I was directed to. Put together that contract. And. The city administrator and I are working on it. If you want a copy of every contract going forward, after you've approved it, we can certainly do that.
I believe that would be beneficial for us as a council in case we need to be making any. So on some of the other correspondence you have here. I would, I would like to know if it's. Something that is, is brought before council and council needs to make decisions on. I think it would be beneficial for us to have that communication as well. And you're, one of your topics on April seventeenth and eighteenth. Is something that seems to me comes before council quite often. And I don't have a council address, email address yet. So I don't know whether you send it, but me, that would be beneficial for us.
Okay, um, I'll just need a little bit of clarification when there's routine questions about. Repetition of the code or an agreement. Other legal matters, if I, it's not my practice to include all of city council on that. So I would just need a little bit of clarification on what you want to be copying to.
Who do you send the correspondence to, to the administrator?
Yeah, so it's.
So can.
The questions about.
Well, I mean, I agree with Ms. Sykes about correspondence. It's like, so who are you corresponding with? And, you know, I mean, I've kind of wondered that at times too, like who are you corresponding with? And we don't know what that correspondence is at all. You know, it never gets shared with.
Sure, yeah, if the city administrator is asking me a question, then I'm corresponding with her.
So can we, can we? Direct the city administrator to correspond. Correspondence back to us?
Sure.
Yeah, or you could just include us in the correspondence.
Do you feel that that's, well, and I guess the correspondence isn't just specifically with. Myself, at times it includes Mr. Moore. We've had a discussion earlier on some of that topic. A lot of times it includes as well, Mr. Colander in terms of. Permitting. Licensor or license, those kinds of things. So, you know, it's certainly a correspondence with. Administrative and city hall per se. So I guess. Perhaps, I, I know that there's been some discussion about. Once everyone is seated. At, we've had both DOLA, CML, and then our attorneys. Have offered to walk the council through kind of. Some pros and cons, some opportunities from a council. Training standpoint on, on what. Conventionally or traditionally i- is your role. In terms of management of the city, so. That would lend itself. I, you know, I. Kind of correspondence that you've got. Would be. Get lost in that correspondence pile, but if you want something specific, we'll be. Looking to accommodate, I just don't know.
Well, in the case of the attorney, like we don't get this until the Friday before the meeting. So, you know, a lot of times I don't even look at it till the weekend. So I can't, if I did want to request something, then I'd be requesting it the Monday before, so. You know, if we could just set up some better lines of communication where we know what's going on. All along so that when we get here, if we have a question, like. I don't know correspondence, I don't know what question to ask. I don't know what you were corresponding to commercial appraisers, I don't know what that means.
Well, we do know, we.
Well, you know what I'm saying, I'm like trying to make my point, like, you know, I don't want to be bombarding you on a Monday before a meeting saying, well, what was this, what was this, what was this, and then expect an answer.
Sure, and the city also has a copy of my bills which include a lot more detailed entries. So if that's helpful to city council, then you have access to that as well.
Yeah, I guess my point was when we are, we are that. We are. Presented with information to make a vote on, and we actually have to vote. And we don't have all the correspondence, then it's difficult for us to, to make that decision. So maybe we can work on. An idea that would be better for us.
Yes.
And in the meantime, if there's something we want to know, we can reach out, you can say if it's appropriate.
Or you can always call me.
Okay, thank you.
So administrative report. The only thing I need to, would like to add to that, couple of notations. We were able to turn the color ditch back on today, so we are. Pulling seven to eight. Cubic feet as of now. Gomez has been running for a week and a half, so we're augmenting. Continuously now and now, as long as we have water available. We'll continue to monitor water and work with the water commissioners. On availability, so. That. Was good news as of today. I don't believe, I, I did include on your. Your particular locations, the water hall for April, that is a report that is. Is required. Obviously, I didn't pull it until yesterday because April was still the thirtieth. We are starting to see. An increase in the number of active accounts. For those of you somewhat new, we have currently about a hundred and. Hundred and seventy. Accounts, not all of those are active. But in the last four months, we're starting to see a, an increase in active accounts and, and. In the volume of usage as well.
So on water hall, kind of back to work session, we talked about water debt and all of that. What? Is there a portion of the fees for water hall that help pay for water debt? And if not, if not, why not?
Could the water debt needs to pay for the water debt? So. Because they are not paying for it, then as the city is paying the debt regardless, it's coming out of. The rest of the funds.
So that's what I'm saying, so why aren't we, why aren't water hall users having to pay fees? As I and every other resident has to pay fees.
Paying fees.
But are they, are they comparable to what I'm paying in my house? I mean.
So they're not users, so they're not eligible for a debt. So the debt pays the debt on the billing system. That's the structure. I'm not aware of another way to be able to go around that, do a different kind of setup. So the city has created. Normally it would. So I don't know if we've had a few pieces in the tax to cause a few free tender collections, but. We would need to change the debt rate in order to satisfy the debt collection.
What does that money go then? That's collected for. Water hall users.
Goes into the system as a water supply. We're selling water, just like the water charged in the billing that collects the water supply fee. They're paying quite a bit more than the customers, of course.
Has that been reviewed at all lately to this timeline? What's charged there?
The rate for the, so the rate has not been addressed for about five, well, since twenty sixteen. So no, the council has. The council sets the water hall rate. I don't know the last time that was, I have no idea.
I don't know, I, I hear all about it, it's expensive, nothing's been talked about revenues.
Yeah.
Anyway. Yeah, the.
Been adjusting that.
Yeah, ideally the rates are set once.
I think a lot of things need to be addressed. And. Not wait months to do it.
Any additional questions in regards to the administrative report?
Can you just talk a little bit more about the CDPHE and the. Backflow, like. What's like the status of that? Has everybody got that done, been notified that they have to get it done, and is it done?
As of May first, we have sent out second notification letters. To those parties who have not responded or communicated with the city as to whether they have a certified. Which requires a test. Or that they're in process. There are, as I indicated. Hundred and eighty plus commercial accounts that are required by the state of Colorado to have backflows. So we're working diligently with commercial properties. That try to ensure that we are compliant.
And how many of those one eighty, these second notices?
Probably at this juncture, we have about sixty percent that receive second notices.
And so what happens after?
May thirty-first?
Yeah.
May thirty-first, we are required by state statute and our ordinance to terminate water service to those. Operators that they are non-responsive.
And was that. Notice warning in their second notice?
You have a copy of the second notice in the administrative report, and it is clearly identified and they're citing the ordinance specifically.
I mean, that's just kind of worrying, sending sixty percent of that at the beginning of May.
Well, and. Been at this and been on it now for. Quite a while.
I know.
So. Unfortunately. Is again, one of those things that should have been addressed two and a half years ago. And we are now. Behind schedule.
Can we offer you a copy of your report? For the numbers that have been written up? Who needs to? Who's complying?
I, I have it on a spreadsheet and that spreadsheet's required to be uploaded to the state as well, so.
Because I've, I've been questioned by several. Business owners, what's going on and. I feel like I need to be able to give them some kind of answers.
So in the letters, not only have we provided background information on why it's necessary. We've also provided names and phone numbers, contact information for plumbers and certified backflow testers. That have indicated an availability to come to our community. Obviously, that's an ongoing issue with mining professionals that respond or will refund. And then we also included a sample from the feds of a diagram of what an appropriate certified backflow. Mechanism looks like. So that people are a little more aware and can. And perhaps talk. Intelligently with a plumber and or.
What's the cost of getting that done for our business?
I can tell you for the city stuff in the end of the week. So it really depends upon the application and, and the size of the line. The size of the backflow that's required and its location and what has to be, how it has to be plumbed to become. Compliant. So it's, has to have the opportunity to. Drain. So if you don't have immediate access to like a ore drain or some mechanism to drain it, then. It can be an involved.
So it could be thousands, I mean.
I don't think there's any that has been installed that are under a thousand.
Yeah, just equipments.
I've priced backflows anywhere from seven fifty to nine hundred bucks, just the mechanism itself.
Unless you want a good one. It's been run up to a couple thousand.
Other questions? No.
No.
No, thank you.
Martinez?
No.
Mays?
But I still would like to.
Yes.
It'd be good information for all of us.
I can email that, I updated it and sent it to the ORC yesterday.
Well, everybody who does not have any email, get a city email. Yes, I mean, I just, I personally, I mean, I, you know, when I came on, I was very adamant about not using, you know, especially a work email and stuff like that. I mean, I just don't think it's good, you know, I see your housing email and I see your personal email and I just don't think it's a good idea. Like, I don't know why that wasn't a priority.
I addressed that today.
Asked it with IT. In the next day or two.
Thank you.
I promise you, you're welcome.
The building inspector and code enforcement, the building permit report submitted. This also has an enclosure. Any questions or comments about that?
Who's been issuing permit?
We're issuing him, them here at city hall between myself and my, our assistant volunteer, Ms. Rob.
Yeah, I have a question about that, I'm gay and possibly. And I, I don't know. If this is, you can speak about it or not, but is that really something that a volunteer can be doing for us? Is, pardon me?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'll go ahead and finish here.
It's, it is a concern and it's been a concern that is expressed to me, so what is? If, if that's some sort of an enforcement procedure or it's.
It's, no, it's not an enforcement.
Okay.
It's a paperwork, paper flow process.
Okay.
So for the building permits. Multiple levels of building permits there, I mean, we have sign permits. Building permits for. You have commercial permits. So on the agenda, you'll find that there's obviously based upon. Last month for AEC. West, they are. Code review, or plan review. Code compliance and building inspector, that's contract that you will review tonight and approve for people. They review the plans, commercial plans in particular. And based upon that, then it can be issued. But for most of your standard permits for the general population of roofs. Then an applicant can come in, fill out the application. They stayed on the. They state on the application what the job is, that they're going to do a tear off, they're going to do whatever. Uh, the paperwork is complete, they identify the value of that permit. They pay the permit, we issue the permit card, notify them as to what point we're requiring inspections. So most conventional residential. Permits are pretty cut and dried. It's a, it's a paperwork, is the paperwork complete? Have they filed the application? Have they paid their fee? And, and. We can continue in that manner. So.
I have a question.
Sir.
Who's closing the permits out?
Those permits are being closed, if you'll. If you'll notice. The building re, the building report for twenty twenty three. Uh, you'll note on there both the address, the intent of what the application is. The closing of the permits. Uh, if they're orange. Are, um, have been closed or closed both virtually and visually inspected for closure. And they're signed off by myself.
So either.
Some of them are missing.
Some of them have not been closed, correct?
The guy asked me months ago who was going to close out for those windows and nobody's ever got back to him. He calls all the time and he don't get a call back.
They're still working through, um, the twenty twenty two paperwork.
He's losing money though because he can't close that out.
I don't know the address, but I think we're eighty, eighty-five percent closed out of twenty, there were. Not much of twenty twenty two had been closed and finalized. So it has been. A little daunting and to Ms. Rob's credit. She has spent the last month and a half sorting paperwork. Trying to find permits, trying to get them into file folders. Trying to figure out where each permit is and, and who the contact people are, so.
So.
Happy to walk you through that process and I would love to have you. Come in and, and see what, what she's been able to accomplish with permits alone.
So on there, there's a column that says permit paid. And all the top ones are blank. So did they pay it? Did they not pay it? I mean, is that just an oversight that's been updated?
It's not updated.
It's just not updated. And kind of back to the volunteer doing this. So is there? You know, if it was an employee, employee would be covered by city insurance. Who is a volunteer? Where does that liability lie?
As a, as a volunteer, the liability. What it is that they are doing. If they are serving on behalf of the city, then the liability is. Depending upon now. Where she walks outside the city bu- building and falls down, then. More liable because of the building, but then she would be. Why would she walk outside, but?
But if she was out like on a. Serving a permit and got hurt on the site or whatever, it could happen. City is responsible for volunteers. Do we have volunteer insurance? Like, how does that work? So like, I'm saying, like, to cover volunteers and if they're out actively in the bills. You know, there's got to be some kind of liability. I mean, I know, like, like we have volunteer insurance. But if we have volunteers who are working for us and they get hurt, we have volunteer insurance that comes in and takes care of that because workman's comp is going to cover that. So what is the city? Do we need to ensure the safety for our volunteers?
I'll have to confirm that we have volunteer insurance. I'm not. I don't know whether Searce has, we have that particular.
It's, it's a liability and, you know, that's kind of our, to cover all liabilities.
Uh, I don't think, we're not taking, no ma'am, right now.
Oh, that's Sharon, sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's Ms. Miranda. I couldn't see who the, who the head was.
A waiver with us. Saying that the city will not be responsible for them getting hurt on any part of what they do.
Thank you.
But I still think you're.
Is without, that's only as good as the paper is written on and, and I think we all know that, so some liability.
But I think we still owe it to volunteers.
I, I don't just.
I'm happy with it.
So that, that's my question. Do they, uh, is the volunteer going on? Individuals' property and do they have any note identification, say it's who they are and who they represent?
Street drive-by visual photos.
So are you telling me that they've not gone on any, uh, any property? And done any posting or done anything on anybody's property as a representative of the city?
So there was a replacement posting and, and what you need to know is that that is city property.
Okay, so my question is, would they go on a, another property, they identifying themselves as a, a city representative?
I don't know the exact conversation that was had. But. She replaced a notice that had blown off of a door. And that was done from city property.
Okay, thank you. So if it, if it does happen, they will have some identification of who they are.
You can certainly accommodate that.
Thank you.
I think that would just be in the best interest of the city and, and any volunteer or, I mean, it would be just like a city employee going out. They have identification, you know, they're from the city, so anyone representing the city should have that same identification.
Other comments? Um, unfortunately, we don't have a city animal control officer report. Ran into a vacation overlap and, and we'll have one for you next. On the sixteenth. City court docket.
Can we get back to code enforcement real quick? Cause we kind of, we're talking about building permits and stuff. So enforcement, so are we only doing like six cases a month on code enforcement? I mean, I could go down my street and probably do six.
No ma'am, those are, those are the only specific items because they have gotten to an agenda docket.
So how many, I mean, so our code enforcement is only part-time, correct?
Correct, four, four days a week, thirty-two hours.
So how, also it is thirty-two hours. So like, how do you, there's so many things that you can probably cite somewhere for code enforcement on this down. Um, like, how are we kind of? Going out, how are we prioritizing, like, what we're, I mean, when I read like these ones, these are pretty severe ones. But what about just little ones that maybe can be cleaned up? Like, what's, what's the? I don't know. How to do that?
So.
Protocol.
So to, um. Uh, our code enforcement officers' credit. He has gone into, uh, doing a pre-citation visitation with property owners. That has been quite successful. He goes in, introduces himself. Talks to the property owners about the situation. And, and what their recourse are and what the city's recourse is. Um, and, you know, so it's a much more. Proactive approach rather than a reactive. That has met with some very good response. Um, a lot of his activity is driven by, um, consumer complaints. Numbers, that kind of thing. Um, so he follows up on those and does the same type of, of communication citations. And then when it gets to. And no response, like. Lot of witnesses here, then they will cite it into court.
I mean, I just, I mean, that's great, but I would like to know that, like, how, I mean, I don't need to know where he went, but. Like, how many citations did you do this month or this week or whatever? Like, get some more data so that we can really see that they're out there. And another note on these ones that are here, of course, it's the same people over and over it appears, but. It just seems like it's a waste of time. They go to court, they don't show up for court, they didn't know there was court, I went to court, I came in, I thought it was at this time, I thought it was at this time. Nothing ever gets solved. Like, what can we do to either give the judge more? Control or power to, to really make, I mean, these are the same people over and over and over, and it's the same story over and over and over. How do we clean this? What can we do to help?
Best I can do at this juncture is have a conversation with both, uh, uh, our municipal court judge and, and Ms. Vera. And see if there's. Something else that we can from an ordinance standpoint, work towards, right, you know?
I mean, I just feel like we keep having the same theme here. Like, everyone's like, yeah, the city, yeah, the city, and build them up. And this continues and it's frustrating.
Under court.
Yeah. But yeah, I would like to see more of. Besides these cases that have gone to court, see what else we're doing, like these pre-think, that's great.
I prefer to see, uh. Contacts and type of.
Just like more detail, yeah, that way, that we can see the success of this free citation report, recall that. Thank you.
For clerk, the docket has been included also. Um, any comments, questions on the docket? City accountant, Mr. Moore, would you like to? Anything you would like to add to your report?
It entertained any questions?
Um, Mr. Moore, I do, um. I do, do recognize. Your statement, first statement on training. So. I would like your opinion on. If there is value, you would see value in training. At this time.
I do, uh. We budgeted for Cassell training to occur in the event that council would approve that. And, uh, at this point with the audit. Getting its deadline period. Um, I'm of course, one of the key people for the training. I still learn and sell as I move forward. And really have no clue how the system's supposed to work as, as an entirety.
Yes.
So, um, I would be the key person to get trained in terms of a variety of elements of the system. Uh, then our payroll and payables clerk, uh, is going to benefit from having enough time spent with a professional onsite. Uh, same with the utility management system. We have two people who need time on that. And then our clerk also works with the business licensing system. I don't know to what degree. He may need any additional, uh, time on that. We were looking at the potential of having someone come onsite.
Yes.
One of the concerns I have. Is the, you, counting system has not been maintained. Really. For a number of years and it's got a lot of, of bad data in it and it's difficult to weed through what's. Meaningful and what's not meaningful. It costs us a deal of money with our CPA and our auditors to spend time. Trying to move through things that are not relevant. Um, I cannot produce a decent balance sheet whatsoever out of that system. It would just be full of, of. Meaningless numbers. So one of the things I was asking Cassell to be able to provide. While they were onsite is a review of. Structured to be working for us currently. I have concerns that the utility management system. Uh, may not be structured appropriately. I personally went through and. Had to overhaul the entire gas customer database because it was. Full of, of bad rate settings in it. Never had the time to even look at the. Base, so. Uh, elements like the rates in the payroll system. That have just been creating garbage data for us for years. So, uh, we, as I mentioned on the report. Finally resolved the unemployment tax, uh, rate and, and. Amounts that it's going to be charging, the workman's comp, I worked with Cassell over the phone. And it's still not working properly. So, uh, getting them onsite, having them look at how our system is set up while they're training us and so. As we're using the system and they are looking at the process, I think we could get some, uh, much better results. And maybe not look at the need to trade out that system for another one and create a perhaps bigger burden. So that money is budgeted. Uh, I would like to start maybe with July or August. Be able to have, uh, telling representatives come. So I think last time the bird, the concern was the cost of their overnight travel and stay. So, uh, otherwise the training cost itself onsite wasn't, didn't seem to be prohibitive. So July or August would be ideal. And we could get that set up and I think we would get a lot more out of our system.
Why so late? Can you do it earlier?
Audit is pressing it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I've read the minutes of the meeting clear back to, I don't remember the gentleman's name. That was here before you.
Mr. Riley.
Um, Mr. Riley. I, I don't know, but, um, it's very interesting to me that there have been several people that were here and several people that are here now. That have said, um, the issues that they've had. Because of lack of knowledge. And, um, information on Cassell and the amount of money that it's cost the city of Walsenburg. I cannot imagine and it's documented in the minutes of the meeting for years. So I'm asking you, what do you need from us? To be able to move forward with that plan and you could maybe set it up now and, and arrange for them to be here. When you're done with your, um, financials, what do you need from us?
So what I'll do is get an updated quote.
Okay.
From the, the representative, uh, look at potential. Costs for travel are, are hard to identify. Their other alternative is for us to travel to Utah. Appropriate, so, um. Then I can bring that to the council for approval and, uh. Ideally, we could schedule that maybe right at the end of July.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Moore, thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So, and I just want to comment, um. I think to say that it was rejected by council or sort of harsh wording, we asked for another proposal to come before us. And that was at the time we lost our administrator and it never came back before us. So we didn't approve what came in front of us. We asked for additional information, another quote, and we never received it. So I, I just want to comment on that. It was something we wanted to do. They were trying to tie it in with Colorado City. Like, i- it was just so messy the way that it was presented to us and we did ask for additional information and it never came to the, the council again, so. I just want to say that for the road, for the record, but I do support it. It needs to get done and. The sooner the better. And if there's something that staff can start working on prior to them coming out, I think we need to get it in place.
We do need to get it in place. Yes.
And I, I think we're at a point now, both Mr. Moore and the, the staff there. Know what, know what they don't know. So, you know, you, until you can get to a certain comfort level of what your job is, it's difficult to even know what kind of questions to ask of, of a trainer. Kind of opportunities you need to explore further, so. I think to Mr. Moore's. Credit and response. They are now prepared and ready to truly take advantage of, of the training. Through Cassell, so.
That's what I'm saying. If we'd have done this a year ago.
I, I think the timing.
Right.
Would have been.
And, and, and those people that were here at the time aren't here anymore. So.
I disagree with that.
Part of it too.
Training's good anytime.
So my other question is your number two about the unemployment tax. So did the city lose money on that too?
Not a lot fortunately, the, the rate is two percent, so, um, we failed to collect the appropriate deductions from the. Staff, so that's been going on for. Years. And, and the city match, of course.
An unemployment?
Yeah. So, uh, that is, uh, really low dollar amounts.
And then, um. Number seven, you talk about the plastic bags. I'm kind of blown away. First quarter. Seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. That's a lot of money for plastic bags, uh, at ten cents apiece. What happens with that money? Where's it at? What are we doing with it? Cause I know it has guidelines on it, how it can be spent.
It does. It's, it's limited guidelines, uh, the state's, um. Listing of the guidelines does not seem to be complete. I'm hoping that they'll touch that up a bit. I've looked at it once and it's supposed to be used for cleaning up. Many in one way or another, so what specifically?
There's a piece of it that has to be spent on like education, right? Like educating people.
Maybe, I don't remember.
Thought that was a big part of that.
In there.
So, I mean, are you keeping that money separate so that we use it? So I mean, are you keeping that money separate so that we use it accordingly?
Is a balance. So so it has a revenue account and we can identify what that is is coming in. And when we are going to start spending it, I'll have a specific expenditure account to balance against that revenue. So uh, I do know I have been contacted by a group who is interested in in uh, well countywide, of course, cleanup. And they were contacting me to inquire about, you know, use of the bag fund receipts. And I told them that they can approach council and and if they have a project that they've identified, uh, they can bring that to council and see if you're interested in. At but I at the moment, I think we might want to wait another quarter or two.
Okay. So one of the other things that's on here, one of the other things that your predecessor had, we had talked about is when customers pay with the credit card or debit card, you know, a credit card and there's fees attached to that. So customers aren't paying that fee. The city of Walsenburg is paying that fee. So there was discussion, I I believe it was like early twenty twenty two. That's when you came on, right? Right before you came on and he had a number that the city was actually paying those credit card fees and it was a pretty significant number. So anytime you use your credit card, there has to be attached to it.
Yeah, I'm I'm familiar with the fee.
So I I use my credit card to pay my utility bill. I'm not paying that fee. The city's paying that fee. So again, it's something else that the city is paying.
More fees. Depends on how people set up the model in the past. So I'm not familiar with what that decision.
And he was, well, the decision, part of that was, I can't remember, we're going to buy something and those fees were going to start being charged.
Um, I've never heard of that. So um, if if there's a way you want to do that, I don't know that that's.
Do we have any way to know what kind of fees the city of Walsenburg is paying when people are paying their utility bills with?
Paying about a thousand dollars a month. I mean, I can actually give you exact figures on that. Um, so so in the ballpark of a thousand dollars a month for the credit card fees, you know, and and that transacts.
That's twelve thousand dollars a year.
Uh, well, right. Um, so really, uh, the most efficient structure without having to create additional uh, processes would be to just make sure that we're recovering the cost in terms of the rate that we set. Because we're recovering all sorts of costs with the rates that we set in in billing. So.
You would need to have an ordinance that clearly specifies that the city is going to charge a fee to recoup the cost of that credit card rate.
Right. And then we might have to create that fee and then we would have to also then be booking that in a different way than what I'm doing right now is just an expenditure. So so really the current process strikes me as the most efficient way to do it. And all we need to do is make sure that our rates are set to cover the cost of operations as as that being another cost of operation.
How's that fair to a person that's paying in a different method?
Well, I think if rather than get too far down this rabbit hole, if you will allow, council will allow administration to prepare a report, we'll try to bring it to you. If not, I don't know that it'll be appropriate May sixteenth, but perhaps the first June where we have a um, approach on how we want to identify cost of offsetting the cost of that.
I'm just, I mean, you know, I just, we just keep paying for all this stuff and then it adds up after a while. So.
So give us that. Any other comments?
If you I don't, I don't know how we do it if we have a credit card and machine company, but I know private business in town that have changed credit card machine companies. The new machine charges a fee to the customer instead of to the business.
And it may be bill pay can redirect that as well.
So, but we need to certainly notify those people at that point of transaction. So we'll check into that further. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ma'am Sykes?
So I do thank you for the um, for the uh, budget report, Mr. Moore. I did read it um, last month and I I'm confused or I don't understand that the way I see it, the only income that you are reporting is for gas. Is that correct?
Is it you're looking at exactly?
The re- the expenditure comparison comparison to budget. So I don't see where you.
Pardon me. Um, it to to find the revenues.
Mm hmm.
It's per fund. So of course, the general fund is on the cover because so there's a a whole set of revenue accounts and in there to collect the different types of of sources we're receiving. So is that what you're looking at?
Um, yeah. So you're telling, you're saying to me that I can look in this report and see what, how much money you've received in the water fund?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Um, city treasurer, Ms. Bar, the paid invoice report uh, enclosure. Any questions or comments in regards to this report? To be here? Director?
No.
Martinez, Ms. Mace?
So on the community banks of Southern Colorado, what is satellite monitoring? Thirty eight hundred dollars.
Um, that satellite monitoring is for your water, um, state water uh, reports for.
So is this credit, is this a credit card?
Uh, no, it's a direct bill.
They're direct bills. So what are the Google Gas, Google's, or Google Water? Those all the same thing?
Gas.
There's Google Gas, we were Google, and it looks like they're reoccurring charges on that. And these are like from February, but this is an.
Page are you on?
I am on page four. And these are all for February twenty twenty three, but this is an April report. So like where are March charges were or four charges? I mean, why is this billing like so far behind when we're sitting in April? I mean, it's hard to keep up with the budget and finances it is, but when these are all so old months later. Did you see him?
Okay, I know.
My department.
It's the split. So we're paying uh, Google this our web hosting.
Oh.
So those are the four splits uh, for the budget to allocate the.
And we pay them twice a month?
Uh, they bill uh, against the credit card. So the credit card rolls over. So sometimes two invoices will appear in one month and not the next month.
So it's possible that this is February, March?
Yes.
So how do you keep that all straight in your books?
Um, I I get their invoices, pull them down off their platform. So so I can identify which month is which, missing invoices of what this is, is the credit card. They have already charged the credit card. The bill comes in a month later and then we don't pay the bill off of that. The bank is drafted directly from the credit card. And then it's a matter of getting it booked. So this is just a booking issue and not a payment issue.
Okay.
They are paid in a timely fashion every time because the automatic withdrawal.
And then CCOM, is that all of our landlines? That's not our.
That's a.
Cell line. Those are all landlines?
Provide the internet service and currently the phone service.
Or landline.
Yes, landline.
Additional questions or comments? Um, we'll move into citizens' comments. I'd like to remind uh, citizens that you have three minutes. Um, if you have, there are no resolutions or ordinances this evening, so this will be your one opportunity to make a presentation to question the city council. We'll start with those in the room, Ms. Barr.
When we begin billing and comparison of the budget?
Please state your name and.
Your last name, for me, please. Laura, A R A. Amazing, but most of the things that you talked about today are in a little report I prepared for tonight. Um, I know there are many things that are being accomplished, but there are big issues that are getting left behind. So billing issue is one. These um, comparison report is a huge one. Uh, there are policies that need to be um, followed and not being followed. So I have prepared a formal complaint to um, well, it's addressed to the city of Walsenburg leaders.
Yes.
I will give a copy to Ms. Vera, a copy to Ms. Davis. And I will send you an email copy of it. Um, but I don't know for sure if Mr. Ecker or Ms. Sykes will get it because I don't know about their email address. So I don't know. I may have to get you a hard copy. It is regarding billing issues. Have now found out that express bill pay might not be working. So it's not keeping up with people, charges that people have made. They're probably getting late fees and then they're coming in and paying it again. And I don't know what's happening, but there are a lot of people saying that they paid their bill and express bill says that they need to pay more money. So I think that needs to be addressed or turned off or something because uh, we're hurting the customers. Um, I know there's because there's too much on here, but it addresses billing issues. Uh, or not comprehensive plan, the revenues to expenditures. But you need to take care of those billing issues because citizens are being hurt enough already because they're paying huge amounts. One person said they paid three thousand dollars last month because you changed the meter. That should not be happening. Um, talking about uh, employees, first choice again, which still hasn't been answered. Um, all of the uh, the city, the employees, because we have a huge shortage of employees. Why aren't they standing around? I've addressed that in here more. Um, I've included all the ordinances, the financial policy, uh, everything I could kind of think of. So I may have missed a couple of things, but um, it's in here and uh, the raises, I was appalled by the raise amount. So I guess that's coming before you, but we didn't receive anything. So I don't know what's going on with that. So I'm sure you'll address that too and it will be fair to the citizens. Um, I'd like to know when the special recall meeting is going to be posted to the web because I need some information off of it. And if I need to come here and look at it, I think others need to be um, listening to that. Because I think there are some things that are not being followed that Ms. Vera or Ms. Goldman said um, about when you're taking the ballots out and all of that. Um, so I think we need to check upon that. Um, and thank you, Ms. Laura. This one's for you. One's for you and I'll get you your copy back.
Thank you, Carmen.
Thanks.
Stephanie Sandoval, she has billing questions?
Thanks. Um, please Sandoval, I'm here on behalf of our billing questions and a few people that I know who have billing questions and we've had to go on to payment plans. Um, my payment plan started in February, made the first payment in February. And I have the receipts and my bank statements, I think it's February, March, and April. Three pay- three payment bucks. And I got my bill yesterday with a payment plan on it. And I was told on April nineteenth, when I paid my bill by Stephanie Barr, that my bill would go back to normal at one thirty four ninety one. It's two twenty again. When did the fourth one come? When I'm willing to see, it's all to your fate. On behalf of my friend who could not come of have a small family too, and she's on a payment plan and her bill was over six hundred dollars. And she got a phone call stating on Friday that they were going to turn off her gas. When she called on a Monday, they had no idea why she got that call. So we're just trying to figure out why our payment plans are thought. Where where where's it going? As like I said, on April nineteenth, when I paid my bill, this is where it told me my fa- payment would go back to normal. That's for this one. It's not. Same way as a few others I know.
So Ms. Sandoval, if you can provide your uh, address for both you and your friend, then we will try to follow up tomorrow.
Mine's H twenty nine West Seventh Street. It's only gas. And I will get my friends to email me hers. It's up there off of Red Hall. And I will get that for you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming, Ms. Sandoval.
Thank you.
Ms. Barr?
Here we go, Zani. Any questions about water tap and second screen, if you're on golf course?
That's still my name.
Please.
Gary Vazani, B E Z Z A N I. Uh, several weeks ago, I applied for a water tap, as everyone knows. Uh, city law course and uh, the city approved campsites about almost two years ago. Uh, as as we excavated for the electrical, we didn't plan on water. But all the rock we hit, we said is a good time to get it stubbed in. So I give the golf course permission to come across my lot. I applied for a water tap on my lot in Black Diamond to serve as the campsite. Uh, I got a response from Gay Davis. Uh, via email says the contract with Black Diamond doesn't allow it because it's commercial and I don't read it that way. I asked for an appeal. I never heard anything back. That's where I'm sitting.
So we have the information that was made available to this council. And I've been in conversation with Ms. Vera and we will communicate outside of public comment.
Anytime soon. I plan on opening in two weeks.
We should be able to respond by tomorrow morning.
That'll work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Ms. Barr, Almiron, M B I S, M A N. You want to speak of the eight acres and there's one.
Almiron, M B I S, M A N. I come in for for the record. At the last city council meeting, there was a short conversation regarding the executive session discussion to trade eight acres in the quarter quarter of forty acres that my eight acres is situated on my deeds and taxes to be got. It is curious to me that the city doesn't appear to want clarity on this open issue and choose to go forward with attempting to trade property that may in fact belong to me. Dave Johnston, city administrator, long time ago, met with John Stroh and I. And um, and then an attorney yesterday, I don't even know him. But he said if I file papers, um, and Johnson said the same thing. Um, um, perhaps I can cloud the title, the entire forty acre quarter quarter. I have fence material and no clarity on where to put it. This is reminiscent of the confusion around G and M Tire, which I talked about, got confused title to the partial. Um, because of delay and and loss. Um, I missed the page. Long time local realty, John Stroh, own the title to eight acres and daughter title ensured that the city has recently done a survey. I suspect in preparation for a deed with Ferris regarding city like his property over there. I'll prepare an offer to purchase and present it to the city council that number one offers to purchase that undisputed land. Uh, because there where I go, even the county commissioners say they own land where I think I own land. So so it's confusing. Uh, forty acres excluding the railroad, daughter title. Forty acres excluding the railroad, daughter title. County. And there, and there's another fellow that lives out there. They all, they all claim they have two acres. So there's a net left of about 16 or 18 acres.
Can I just say something about Mr. Mr. Meisman's been coming before us since I've been on this council and I don't feel like he's ever received an answer. Can we please go through Ms. Vera and answer his questions from a city standpoint? Again, I know, I think our previous attorney had answered him, but it seems like he's not getting the answer he needs. Can we find some conclusion to this?
If there's some kind of paperwork he submitted, I knowing that he has titles to some property, then we can certainly review that.
I just.
The problem is though. It doesn't show exactly where the lines are. We went over this a couple of years ago. We couldn't find exactly where your land is.
Because the railroad described it in acres yards. So so, you know, we should be able to convert yards to feet, but apparently it tilts the machine.
I know our last attorney said you should get a real estate lawyer to try to help figure this out. That was his idea.
I mean, I just want to help you, Mr. Meisman, get an answer to this.
Yeah, you do too.
Keep and come and, you know, if it is that you need an attorney, whatever it may be, if that's what our previous attorney said, but I feel like we keep just and then we just ignore it. Like, I feel like we need a solution to it.
Well, he may need to get a survey of his property.
Yeah.
Well. John Strong said, told me he'd been practicing real estate around there for 40 years. So he should be better than an attorney. And nobody listens to him.
He's not an attorney though.
Well, when you have it, I probably shouldn't go there, but when you purchased it, what did you, what were you provided? Were you provided a survey? What documentation were you provided, sir?
I pay taxes on a, a, a described piece of property, but it's got one leg left out. So, so, but, but if you take, if you take the railroad description and, and, and eight acres. And what Don told me, it was, it was around the air shaft. So, but, but it, so, so the whole 40 acres, even daughter title has title, have no description in that 40 acres. They're a title company. So, so, so somebody has to just make a decision. And if I buy the whole 40 acres. Was, and, and then I'll, then it clears up because I'm, then I, I got everything. It's not disputed. The county wants some. You guys want to trade off eight acres? It's, it's curious to me that eight acres and I got eight acres, but it's not where I think I got eight acres. So, so if the, if the if, if someone can.
Do, do you have a survey, Mr. Meisman?
What?
Do you have a survey?
No, I have, I have, I have the, it was the city, the city survey. Recently, very recently, the county plowed out their, their survey sticks. Because they think their road goes northwest of, of, of the story.
Okay, let me find it. If you can find something. Okay, Ms. Bar.
Does she have?
Hang on. Caroline Robb, R O B B, Mike Boy. Me. Two things I want to talk about tonight. One is you hear a lot, and I've, I've made a lot of comments as well about how our city doesn't look, represent itself in the way that we would like it to. And the main street doesn't look as nice as we'd like it to. There's a lot of things going on in the city that we'd like to improve. I think some of that, not all of it, but I think some of it has to do with the, the problem that the sheriff's department, if we had backing from the sheriff's department to address some of the issues of the thefts and the, and, and the drug use and all that to where they could take care of it, deal with it and get these people the heck out of here. I think that that would help. Because right now you take one step forward and two steps back. You know, you try to do something nice with your lawn and then when it comes up and steal stuff, you know? It just would be nice if, if they would work in conjunction with the city to make things better. The other thing is, wow, guys, I was really surprised. You all were going to end tonight without doing any city business? I'm surprised. I thought that's what you all were supposed to be doing. As far as the agendas, the agendas were sent out on Friday. Yes, if you have an issue about getting, you know, putting things into executive session. You know, I would think that if you're reading the emails when they're sent out, then you'd have plenty of time to address those things. It doesn't appear to be so. I'm disappointed in that and I'm disappointed that it feels like the city council is holding us hostages to getting anything done. I was, I was really worried tonight when it all first started. That's all I've got, guys.
Ms. Bar? Mike Everwin, you want to speak about the backflow?
Mike Everwin, E B E R W E I N. I'm on that non-compliant list. I thought as of tomorrow, I was going to be good. Because I have a, a test scheduled. I have the backflow installed. I have a test scheduled with a licensed contractor tomorrow. Today, I had a, a surprise visit from state plumbing inspector. And I was told contrary to what the, in my opinion. The letter that's been sent out is not clear. The information that's been given is not clear. I was told by the state inspector today that I cannot install my own backflow protection device. I have done. Because I thought I was led to believe that that was okay. I can't afford $3,000 to $4,000 to have a plumber do it. This is our slow time of year. I can't afford it in the good time of year. But I did it myself. I bought a $500 device. I bought the appropriate equipment to install it, plumbing, valves, other necessary stuff. And today I get a surprise visit. And I'm told by the state inspector. But not only because it's a commercial property, do I have to have a licensed plumber install it? But I also have to have a state permit and a state plumbing inspection. To get to get it all okay. That is, that's not what's communicated in the letter. And I debated on whether, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but since, since it's been brought up on the, the backflow. I don't know if I'm getting a letter or not, but I'm not in compliance. I'm I've been trying to be in compliance. As of tomorrow, I would have been. But now, and I also have to install a sump pump. I found out today. Didn't know that. So I'm going to get it done. Can't afford to get it done. We're going to get it done because I have to. But I shouldn't find out what's required. I get a surprise inspection or a surprise visit. That's this affects every commercial property in, in the city. I don't know. I don't know if anybody else has got that, that issue. I tried to do it right.
Yep.
And obviously I didn't.
Mr. Everwin, I went through the same deal.
I did. Plumbing inspector. State plumbing inspector first. And he won't issue a permit because you need to be a licensed plumber to do any commercial. So I'm very aware of what you've gone through. I, I did the same thing. I, I went out and bought the material. I figured I could do it.
I ended up having to get a, a licensed plumber to install it. So I don't know what else I can tell you. There's so much of being isolated and
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that
But yeah.
Information.
Yeah. It is expensive, I know.
Out there.
Yeah.
Information needs to be complete because if if you're telling me I gotta do something. Should I have to go do the research myself? To, to find out the right way to do it, or should, should the requirements of the city include those? That, that you need to
Bottom, bottom line, the, the state inspector isn't going to issue a permit unless you have a license.
Wasn't even going to call the state inspector because I didn't know it was required. You know, that's my point. If it's required, if, if there's a process, you do this, you do this, you do this, and then you get it certified.
I don't know.
Why isn't that
You have a letter here. I'm, I'm sure that was sent out. I'm sure that it said.
I don't, I don't. Back it, it didn't. It did not. It didn't specify that to have a certified.
And if you're going to threaten to shut my water.
Yeah.
It affects my, my rental. Because we have one meter. So I have, I have an apartment that isn't going to have water if you shut my, my industrial, my commercial.
Yeah, I think if you talk with Ms. Davis, that can be ironed out. Then they're going to shut your water off for, for that. Just so you have a plan of compliance. That's what the state's requiring and she's just doing her job. So.
Well, and it's unfortunate that the city took until Ms. Davis got here to start letting people know because I think the city knew for years that this was supposed to be done.
No, right, right. She's just, she's just trying to get in compliance with the state.
But we need to get all the information out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe you could put, put something on the website. Thanks. A little more clarification as to the steps that you do need to have the state inspector. Would that be helpful?
Yep. Or get something from the state inspector.
Ms. Bar? Claire Stutzen?
I mean, I've watched this. Okay, my name is Blair Stutzen, S T U T Z, M A N. And I'll try to do this in three minutes. First of all, I have some property down in the Northlands. We bought 103 acres. You got a beautiful county here. I would think that water and your finances would be upfront and trying to get a plan together and move forward. We came in with Mr. Eckhart. This, these comments are not directed to anyone. I appreciate all you all, everybody, what you're doing. Mr. Eckhart was going to save this town with cannabis. We came in and we were going to put six cannabis grows in. We told that we sold you all old water to the golf course. You had plenty of water. I got two in, four didn't go in. My partners and I lost $500,000 on that. There's a lot of issues with this. I was just at an hour meeting with some young, some elderly, well, nice ladies over at the community center, my age and younger. That's lived here for 50 years. Mickey that lives in Gardner, I'm sure most, some of you know her. I don't, I just met her, but she's heard talk for 50 years, but no action. I live in Maryland. I see this from the outside in. Doesn't matter to me if you have water problems. I was here last April. I started working on your water. You failed to capture a lot of water last year. I've talked to your water commissioner. Doesn't the water hall come off of the Northland's water? Isn't that, that's right here at the, out of the meter though? It go, the meters that I rejected to public.
A water hall was added in because it's augmented.
Right. So the city gets augmented water through the Northland, right?
No.
No.
No. No, Northland's water is augmented. Everything that goes into Northland's requires
It's not returned through the
No, I, I understand. Well, I was told by the floor commissioner that the North, that the city makes water off the Northland's water, right? That, that, so there's a lot of things that I got to say. So again, you go one way, then you go another, then you go another. You've had so many mayors, so many people. It's not these people's fault. Okay, but you guys got to realize too and, and do your research. The cannabis grows, we use 280,000 gallons of water a season for 1,800 plants outside. That's less than an acre foot of water. You have a four acre leak right now at the Best Western a year. It's, it's leaking, it's leaked 120 about 160, 160 gallons of water into a ditch while we've been here. Okay, it's right by the Best Western. You fixed one last week supposedly. It leaks 120 gallons an hour at least, if not double. That's a 86,000 gallons a month. That's four acres a year. That's a lot of water leaking into a ditch that you've already captured. Put it through the plant. And it's running into a ditch right as we speak and has for three years. This council has talked about it, talked about it, but nobody's done anything to it. So you got it. There's, there's more, there's so many. I, I want to help. But you, you know, four acre feet of water is all I need. You know, I'm trying to develop. I'm trying to do things, but it's like him. I, our cannabis grow.
Thank you, Mr. Stutzen.
Yeah, it was, it's, yeah.
Ms. Ms. Bar?
Ed Conway? You want to speak about the garbage?
And Ed Conway, C O N W A Y. Just wanted to, FYI, about the credit card. People don't realize when they use their credit cards, they're thinking they're getting 1% back, 2% back, flight miles, but it's really costing them in the long run. Because all the businesses have to charge more for the good to, to make up for that credit card fee. I had a business and my credit card fee was three and a half percent. And I had that for years and I got mad and I called all the processors and I got it down to one half of 1%. You just have to ask. As for garbage, that's my big thing. A thought should be taken about having a garbage collection day for free for everybody to bring anything they want out to the front of their house. You will find it's going to cost you some money. You're going to get a lot of people who want to get rid of the garbage, but they don't have the means or the money. And you're going to have a lot of people come in with recycling truck and they're going to take half of that. And then you're going to have a lot more people coming in. One man's garbage, another man's treasure. They're going to take a lot of that too. But it's not going to cost you that much. And you do that once a year, maybe twice. You'll get things cleaned up fast. Just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Bar?
So Zoom, Stacy Deckard?
Hey, guys. Decker, of course, out of Lincoln Decker, D E C K E R. A couple of things. The group email setup can be done for council based issues for the lawyer. If there's some kind of group setting in the mail setup. If there's a council based meeting, just send them to the group email versus having to worry about every single one individually. Be easier that way. I have a question about the current bill. I have the gas customer charge. Is that standard for everybody or those of us that transitioned away from gas due to the way the state does things with plumbing? Miss Gay, I don't know if, I don't know if you know the answer to that question or not off the top of your head.
Gas customer charge.
Gas customer charge is charged to all gas customers.
I'm not a gas customer anymore.
Then you wouldn't be charged that.
Okay, so that can be addressed. Stephanie, if, if anything, maybe look at that and we'll talk, I can come down to the office when you talk about in the near future. I'm hoping, I think we are, but the recent moisture that we've been capturing is going into our water supply. Is that correct, Ms. Davis? If I understood your report correctly. We're able to catch a lot, capture a lot of the current moisture right now?
So what we capture is what's allowed by the state from through the Kachara River. So the snowpack has increased the volume of water in the Kachara that's available for irrigation and or storage.
Okay, and we're able to capture some for storage for hopefully the summer?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, cool. Um, Mr. Moore, item nine, the bulk online utility billing. Will that reduce paper going out the door such that us paperless folks uh, won't receive any uh, a postal? Check in our mail?
Right, the online service allows you to get your statement online, and uh, and a number of customers have requested paperless billing, but uh. We still mail out uh, over two thousand. Statements per cycle.
I wa- I wanna save, you know, Miss Stephanie, a couple of licks on the envelope and a stamp, so. So we can reduce that effort there a little bit. Uh, that was it for me, thanks very much, and uh, Ms. Rob, uh, I agree with you, uh, yeah, this this afternoon, I was a little worried that council is gonna stop early. I'm glad we got that figured out.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, Ms. Bar.
Can I comment on that paperless billing thing, so I've done that for years? The frustration is, is when they do not get uploaded to bill pay, you know. My mother got her paper bill, so I went to pay it online, it's not uploaded online, therefore my bill's not online. And my. Due date continuously changes, where it was always the same every month, and now this year it's. Last, last month, it was the nineteenth, so it keeps getting changed, so. I like paperless billing, I don't like having paper, so, but we need to be consistent with it, if the paper bills are going out in the mail, then the online needs to get updated as well. Just saying.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Mr. Geese.
Thank you.
There we go, sorry, I was having a mute issue. Um, thank you, um, I really wanted to bring this uh, to the council in person, but I was pulled away before I started the meeting. Um, I looked through the minutes. Uh, from the um. The meeting on the eighteenth, and I didn't see any discussion. I wanted to revisit um. The Bonacelli uh, basement. Um. Sewer line. Was a twenty-seven thousand dollar. Um, estimate to have that fixed, that the city was gonna pick up. Um. As a professional plumber, um. I believe that that solution could be solved with a three thousand dollar lift fit. Um, and as a water service customer, I would rather not add to the debt of the city. Um. I don't believe, uh, as a builder, or as a homeowner, that that's the city's responsibility to pick up a twenty-seven thousand dollar sewer line. Um, in the international residential code. In section one oh six. Um, it states floor plans can show all floors, including basements, show all rooms with their use. Overall dimensions and location of structural elements and openings. Show all doors and windows, provide all door schedules. Uh, resistance rated assemblies, area of refuge, occupancy separations, fire blocking, draft stopping shall be shown. Um, in section one oh six point two, item number eight. The anticipated location of all water sewage disposal, electric phone. Electrical, telephone, and other utilities. I believe that this builder also was already had the knowledge of the sewer line to the front of his house, he stated himself that he. Installed the sewer line in the middle of the road. If he then continued to build his house. With the sewage into the basement and out the backyard to the alley, it is an egregious error by the builder and the owner. I do not believe that's in any way. The responsibility of the city, and as somebody that pays eighty dollars a month for a zero usage at my building. Um, I would. Ask that the city takes some other uh. Action than to pay for this, uh, just because the man was issued a permit. Um, if you all have already discussed that, I didn't find it in the minutes, so I hope that that's not. Um, overlapping, uh, second, um, I would like to address the R P Z, the reduced pressures on backflows. Um, and Mr. Everwine's statements, um. I've been, I've done about twenty for the, for the city count, or the, for the city businesses myself. Um, the average cost of these units is fifteen hundred dollars. Um, the state permit costs twenty-six dollars. Um. I had a conversation with the for everyone a week ago, and I told him that uh, the state does not allow. For that action to be done by the owners. Um. And I advised him that he should get a permit and an inspection. Um, so, again, the, to say a twenty-six dollar permit is out of line. Um, that he was gonna remove. He was gonna not do that, and now he's gonna run for mayor, so I believe that that's a.
Thank you, Mr. Geese.
On his part, thank you.
Ms. Bar.
Deme Sandoval.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
This is Deme Sandoval, um, first of all, I'd like to say. I've been listening to these meetings for over a year now, and. Um, seem to be talking about same. Finance issues over and over, Ms. Sykes brought up several this evening. Um, Ms. Flora and Ms. Mays have been addressing those since November of last year, just at a different approach. And here we are still talking about them and the utility building. And the system that you're using, it just goes on and on, and yes, I am a taxpayer in Werfino County. Own property in the city and the county, in case anyone's wondering, I would also like to say thank you Caroline Rob for the. Volunteer service that you do for the city, it's every day to my understanding, and um, I believe you're a value add as a volunteer. Also, um, I don't know if. Council and people in council chambers are aware, but. Our screens were taken over by. Um, someone who is on Zoom tonight, and that's kind of concerning to me, because I don't know. I don't know, um, the technical part of this, but to see someone take over my computer and start moving. The mouse. According to how they wanted to, and the name was, it was very clear, it's someone on Zoom meeting, I just get concerned. Do they then have access to information on my computer, have they spread any type of virus because they took over on my screen? Um, I I think someone needs to look into that, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Ms. Bar.
Some secrets, well.
Good evening, um. Just a couple of things, first thing, I do agree with uh, Ms. May Sandoval, the screen sharing issue is a concern. Especially if there's viruses on the individual's computer. Um, so just something needs to be done with that, and it went on for quite a while before it. Stopped. Um, my question actually is concerning the bills, again. Um, couple of things, just a suggestion, I don't know if you can do it or not. The delinquent date and shut off date, um. Paragraph or statement that's on there, if that could be changed from blue to red, so it stands out, so the customers actually see it, to maybe pay attention. A little bit more. Um, don't know if that's. It should be an easy fix, as far as just a uh, text color change, but um. My next question is a little more. In depth. And I'd like to know what the crossover time is from express bill pay. To actually being picked up by the city's computing system. Is there a downtime, a lag, what it is, um, if it could be shortened, if it's a long time? Um, and then the other one is a very small issue. Um, cuz I had to do a double take based on the statement in the enclosures of Ms. Davis's report. About the leaf and limb. Notice being included in the bill, it was, but if that could be a separate. Enclosure as opposed to the back of the bill, because I didn't think I had gotten it until I read your enclosure, um, your enclosure on your report. Okay, now I'm ready for answers if possible, thank you.
So the express bill pay data comes down the next morning, so. Consider that a twenty-four hour lag on the weekdays, and for the weekends, of course, it would not be until Monday morning. So if you do pay on Sunday, we will uh, get your payment on Monday morning.
Okay, so anybody that's facing a possible disconnect. Are they affected, or? Uh, do they, do they check the the bills that have been paid prior to issuing disconnect notices?
If if someone's under a disconnect status, what they would wanna do is contact us. If they're going to make a payment online, we could always put the disconnect off one day, and uh, it's best not to uh. Uh, do that. You can come in, so you can pay online. You're going to pay in full, then contact us.
Okay, thank you, that's good information for the community to have.
Thank you, Ms. Cruswell.
Jenna Fox.
Hi, this is Jenna Fox, can you hear me? Um, I would just like to say. I came in last month, I'm so sorry to have to repeat this over and over, but I came in last month because we had a zero read. On our water bill. And I got a new, I don't know if it's a tap or whatever it was. And I just got my bill today, and my water bill is saying that I'm using almost seventy-four hundred gallons. For this last month. Which I know is inaccurate, um, I I don't know what to do anymore, I mean, I'm in there every single month. With my water. Being out of whack, and of course, we know that the one the water's out of whack. That means. The water debt service, the water line repair service, the sewer, the sewer debt service, and the water line repair replacement all goes up. So. Can, how do I get an answer on not having to babysit this every single month? And take my time out to either speak at a meeting or come in to get it resolved, I know it's an issue with so many people, but what are we supposed to do? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
I'm not personally familiar with the meter on the account, so I can't provide an answer at this moment myself.
I- is this your house or your property, ma'am?
This one is the house where the new water tap went in, or the water earth.
A new meter, I thought we'd replaced the meter.
Right, which makes me wonder how accurate the meters are. I don't know how old they are to start with, um. But it's inaccurate. Unless there's a leak somewhere, but I don't think that there is, I think it's just simply inaccurate.
Another possibility then, if it's a new meter, it could be that the decimal setting is incorrect on it, we would have to. Identify what type of meter it is, which we would. Have on record here, we can take a look and see if that's a uh, improper multiplier on that.
So. Instead of just saying we can do this, can a work order be put in for this to be taken care of, so I don't have to spend more of my time? Making sure that something is being looked into.
Really noted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
That'd be standard operating procedure to check that with a computer.
Try to have that information attached to the work orders, but sometimes it's. A mess. Ms. Bar.
I don't see anyone else on.
Hey. Uh, we have no further citizens' comments, we'd like to move to section H presentations, we have no presentations this evening.
Yeah, that's okay, I decided not to ask the question about whether we actually need a state plumbing permit or not for those backflows. Do we have anything that tells us that?
I received an email today that I'm the state plumbing inspector, and I can forward that and put it on the website as well.
Thank you.
That's a good idea.
That was noted earlier by by Ms. Sykes. So no further comments, citizens' comments, uh, no presentations and no public hearings, move to Jay, unfinished business. Uh, under item number four, approval of proposed employee salary changes. I would entertain a motion from the council.
Motion to approve the proposed salary changes.
We have a motion by Mr. Martinez, do we have a second? Hearing no second, the motion dies for lack of a second. Pleasure of the board.
I'd like to see you come up with an equitable.
I I need a motion before we can go into discussion, Mr. B Hill, please.
I make a motion for, um. Discussion. I'll second.
Motion on the floor is to discuss the approval of the proposed employee salary changes, that motion was made by Ms. Sykes, second by Ms. Mays. Question?
So, um. A few things. I don't feel that for me, I can uh, make any decisions. On this, I had heard them at the last meeting, there was concern that it wasn't consistent with other employees. I had requested that we get some background on it, so that I could make a decision if it was consistent. So, uh, that didn't happen, so what I can ask is how. Is it in the budget, um. This way, Ms. Davis, that you're you're presenting these, is it, um, was it in your budget presentation for this year? It is, fits in here?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay.
Based upon the information that I provided, um. Last month. Um, most of these haven't changed dramatically, but we had made accommodations in the budget to accommodate, knowing that we would. Be trying to equitably represent, and knowing that we also had uh, employees that were going to be trying to complete. Uh, extensive certification processes. So Mr. Moore and I had built into the budget funds uh, available to accommodate these.
Uh huh.
And then in some of the departments, obviously, we have had, um. Staffing turnover and concerns, so there's additional funds available just from lack of. Having the appropriate bodies to. Uh, that had been budgeted, so.
So. Someone that was here before, are these comparable to what was done? Is it comparable to what was done, Ms. Davis?
So what we tried to represent here, the, in the addition, is one individual who. Is represented as being one of those people who've received additional certification.
Uh huh.
That was the only addition from two weeks ago. Um. I'm delighted to report that both of our uh, plant operations operators, both the water plant operator. And the sewer plant operator have received their certification in their first levels. And will continue in that process, uh. Great uh, apprentice program through Colorado Rural Water Association, for those of you who are new. What we tried to identify here is that there were some adjustments that had been made prior to. Um. An evaluation, an appropriate evaluation period. And that is identified in this. A percentage increase in the past year, so that explains that. Um, council felt it. Necessary to increase the base pay. From fourteen fifty to fifteen fifty, which is a seven percent increase. Um, and then. Based upon that, those, some of those eligible employees, then when they became eligible for an annual review. Um. That needed to be reflected in that pay increase as well, so.
I don't agree with that. I do not agree with that, and I said that last time, because. This council agreed to raise our minimum rate, that should not be used against. Somebody who's been here a year, that is not fair at all, they are not being evaluated.
Some of the people, not all of them.
And that's what I mean, so one of them, well, from.
Thing in the uh, personnel manual that's identified. Short of certification is uh, an evaluation period. At the conclusion of a year, a merit increase is possible, there are no guarantees. So if there's identified. Uh, job performance improvements, additional training, certifications, and. That was somewhat of the direction that I. I felt I had received. Particularly from you, and I, and requesting and wanting to know if there had been additional certifications to warrant pay increases.
But I also mentioned that that minimum increase should not be held against people as part of a raise that they receive. So here.
Against them, ma'am.
I think it is.
Take that into consideration.
I don't think so. And so here's my, so here's my comparison. I'll give you a clean cut comparison. In November, yes, they're not the same level, but you got a clerk two and a clerk one. Clerk two gets a seven point four percent merit increase. Clerk one gets a one point six percent increase. Billing's not right, billing's not good, but your clerk two who has more experience gets a seven point four percent increase. But here we are wanting to give this person, yeah, she got the dollar to get her up to the minimum that we set in place. But now for your performance evaluation, we're only going to give you a quarter. I have a problem with that. And not only that, but this other clerk also received, I believe, two other increases since I've been sitting in this seat. And I just, I, I just can't see how we're going to give two employees a quarter. I, I can't. And one of them, from the last time you gave it to us at a two point five percent, he's now getting an eight point two percent increase. Yes, he works in a treatment plant, I get that, but I don't understand how. We're just all over the map here. And I've also said I don't like doing these bulk ones with different departments. I don't think they're fair. And I don't think that these raises are fair.
And I agree with you. They're not at all.
And for my example that I just gave you, that you got two people, same department, same issue, same things going on there. One gets seven point four, one gets one point six. I, I can't even swallow that.
So it's, it obviously a point of contention with you, ma'am, but I'd like to point out. That. That clerk one. Truly didn't. A, a one point, whatever. It's still. When you're, when you're talking about employees with history and with years of service. And if they haven't been identified appropriately in previous wages. Then it's not fair to say that a clerk one position, regardless of what they're doing in the department. Is comparable to or comparable to another employee when you. Are certainly not in a position. To where you have supervised and or evaluated either party. So that is the difficult thing, and I'm going to point out to the city council that. It is not your place to evaluate employees. I am your lone employee.
I might get that.
And.
We know that.
Our previous administrator used to give us at least where those, I mean. This is where I evaluated this person. This is why this raise came out this. I could make sense of that. This I can't.
I tried to give that to you last pay period and didn't get anywhere. So I met a loss as to. As to what it is that you truly want, because I am. Again, I don't feel that it's your place to evaluate the employees. And determine what you think is fair when you have no basis for that information.
We do have bases.
Mr. B Hill, you are in and out of the building. And.
And I know you have certain pets, you give extra raises true, and you treat the other ones like crap. And don't tell me you don't. Because I've seen it with my own eyes. Bullshit.
I'm just looking at it from the perspective of this council agreed to make our city minimum fifteen fifty. That's what we agreed. We said that was the way to retain employees, to keep employees. In no way, when that decision was made, did we say that, but we're going to take that into account when you're due for your next. Evaluation. And like I said before. I have worked in HR. I am a director over department. You have percentages that you give for what that evaluation comes in at. So I, I talk in percentages. I don't talk in a quarter or fifty cents or whatever, but like I said, one of these, one of these people. Yeah, but you included that dollar. And I said specifically last time that that was never what our intentions were. Is that because we raised a minimum that you use that.
But you didn't, here's the problem, Veronica. Here's the problem for you people sitting up there. You raised the minimum and you kicked everyone else with any kind of. Established rapport in this administration, in the city. As personnel people, you gave them nothing. Absolutely nothing. So if people had come in and had been here for three months, they got a dollar raise. For sitting and, and we working with them, trying to, trying to get them to where they can do a job. Well, welcome them a raise. Wait, 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 let me finish.
That is.
Nowhere.
The state. That is what's happened in business.
Fourteen fifty to fifteen fifty. That is not minimum wage.
I understand that. We should go from there.
Pardon me. I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't.
No, there is no motion. So if you want to proceed with it, is.
Yeah, we want to proceed with it, but we want it done right. And that's all I'm going to say.
Accept as presented?
No.
I need a motion as.
I'm not accepting this.
Okay, so can, may I ask something? Um, um, Ms. Mays, what is it? You know, I, I do understand what Ms. Davis is saying as well. I do understand what she is saying. What is it that you would, you would be comfortable with? Are you willing to say that? What, what? I don't have the history, Gay, and I, I, excuse me, Ms. Davis, I've heard what you said, but I don't have the history, okay? And I don't want to get into that. But what is it that you're feeling, Veronica? What is it that you?
That there is a couple employees on here that were not evaluated fairly.
Okay.
So that when you look at it, yes, they got the dollar raise, but that is what our minimum was. Anybody starting was going to start at that. That was what the, we did that to retain employees so that those employees did not go elsewhere. And it was with the hopes that it was going to help us retain employees. I never intended for that to be that, oh, we already gave you that dollar because we raised our minimums. And now we're only going to give you a quarter because, well, we gave you a dollar before. Like, that should not be in the evaluation.
Had nothing to do with the evaluation. So if you're saying that they weren't evaluated fairly, I, I have questions as to.
So you're saying that these people were evaluated to receive a one point six percent raise? That's what you're saying, that their performance was valued at one point six?
Oh, my God.
Let's move. The one, well, we have to resolve this. These two, these, um, employees. Now the effective date is, um.
And that was the other thing. I said that it should retro back to the original date.
Okay, well, we need to come to some kind of a resolution regarding this. So, um, I, I don't know what we can do, Vera. I don't know what input the council can have. Um, I don't know whether you want to make a suggestion, Veronica, um. Would, would you like to make a suggestion on what you feel comfortable with? And, and hopefully after this year, we will not have this issue again because you're not going to have. The fifteen fifty issue that you feel is counting against the employees. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if we can have a one-time adjustment that you feel comfortable with. That you feel recognizes this and doesn't penalize them for that, and then we can move forward and that won't be an issue. Am I understanding what you're saying correctly? So what is, so what is, um, uh, fifty cents, fifty cents an hour is what is, um. You're going twenty-five cents an hour for two of the employees, is that correct?
So. So if. Or to, um, look at the fourteen fifty to fifteen fifty, it was just under seven percent increase.
So that's why, and that's where you're getting the one sixty.
Yes.
And when did that go into effect?
Seven percent, that was in July.
You made that adjustment in July. End of July. Second half of July.
And are these evaluations being made on an annual evaluation? So their evaluations were due in April?
Uh, March and April.
So March and April. So they didn't get a whole year of that dollar. Correct?
They were hired at fourteen fifty an hour. They, some of them had been here less than three months, got a dollar increase.
But that's what I'm saying, that you're taking into account that they got that dollar for the whole year and they.
No, I'm taking into account their job performance at the end of their year. And evaluated and adjusted accordingly.
So it's really actually less than one point six? Not safe. I mean, I feel like we're in a cash, we were in November where there was. One department that had not received anything and we passed it because they were all brought together. I said this last time, I don't want departments mixed up together where we have to approve them all or don't.
None of the evaluations in a department come in at the same time. If you are doing annual evaluations. It comes up on their anniversary date. Therein is the challenge.
In November, a whole department came in front of us.
If we're going to give the cost of living. And you can review that across the board, January one of twenty twenty-four. That is the intent of a cost of living and everybody gets the same amount regardless.
And did, did that happen? I don't know.
We're no cost of livings this year.
So how does one employee go from two point five percent to eight point two percent? From when you presented this to us in April to what you're giving us now, it went from fifty cents to a dollar seventy-five.
So from a certification standpoint, he got double certification.
So the certi, you've noted on there, the certi, the, the ones that are certifications.
Is merit and certification. If you try to have a conversation with anyone in the state of Colorado for certified water treatment operators or sewage treatment operators. They won't even talk to you for less than thirty bucks an hour. Our, that's. Our top rate currently. Not even begin, again, it's the pay bands are so out of sync. And they were rather complicated by the base rate increase. By all the other things that have occurred. And I'm just trying to work. Where I can, where I can, when I can. Entertain a motion to. Um, postpone any decision till May sixteenth. Unless I hear a motion.
Make a motion that we straighten this out the right way.
I don't know what that is.
That's.
I don't either. The administrator knows what's right. I don't.
I just, I'm.
No control.
I am disgusted that we give our lowest paid employees. The least amount of increase. I, I just, I get it. Like, it's, it's sad. Um, but, you know, I mean, you've already said your feelings. You said that's what you felt these employees were worth. And I don't believe it's our position to change that. So. I would hope that you would take those bottom two and reevaluate them and be a little more considerate to them. But for tonight, I will make a motion that we approve these as is with emphasis that you please review these two. And see what you can do for them. But I ask that it is made retro back to the twenty-fourth, um, as it was on the original request. That's my motion.
Second.
Uh, motion on the floor is to accept as presented with the intent to review, um, two. In six months?
Three months. Retro, like it immediately.
Retro active.
Retro back to the first date that you brought to us, the twenty-fourth, April twenty-fourth.
So I would request that one may eighth be held. And that's for the individual who did not receive certification until after that pay period.
Um, I would say on that one and the other on the last one because he was not on the one before as well.
Uh, the last one.
The two, the two, yeah, the last one on there was not on the April one.
That's correct.
I would make those May eighth.
Uh, everybody else was on the list. He's the only one who was added.
Right. But I would say, when did, when did that one get his official certification?
Uh, both, he got his certification at the same time. You're talking the sewage tran, plant operator got two certifications at the same time.
Where he has increased one at from last time to this time.
It was May twenty, it would be the twenty-fourth, April twenty-fourth is when he had already received certification as.
I'm going to make this easy. Look, let's do the three effective April twenty-fourth and then the two plant people effective May eights.
Motion on the floor. Is to approve the pay increases as presented. With effective dates of retroactive April twenty-fourth for three and May eighth for two. With reviews on two parties. That motion was made by. Ms. Mays, second by Mr. Martinez. Any discussion? Sykes? No. Director?
We've had enough discussion.
Mr. B Hill?
I'm disgusted already.
Martinez. Bar, call for the vote?
Yes.
Mays?
Yes.
Mr. B Hill?
I guess.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Can we also get a review of those pay bands? Because there were someone who went back and reviewed November that went over the current pay bands that are in place. Are we going to get rid of those or we talk about them or something?
Well, the pay bands were included in the, included in the personnel manual.
Right.
So needs substantial overhaul and review. Um, but yes.
So either that or we.
For Jay unfinished business for five approved. Us consultants. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the AEC West consultants. Agreement for services.
This is the one we talked about last time?
Yes. Motion on the floor for approval. Do I hear a second?
I guess.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the contract is presented for AEC, AEC West consultants for building plan reviews and inspection services. And, um, are you authorizing the mayor and city administrator to sign Ms. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez, sorry. Second by Ms. Mays.
Who put the agreement, Ms. Laura?
Yes, ma'am. Do we have any further discussion? Sykes?
So, um, we're in the, it shows in, uh, this agreement, I believe. That it needs to be, it cannot exceed the budgeted amount. Is that correct? Is there terminology about that in there?
Yes.
And I don't know what the budget amount is. I didn't understand. That wasn't specified. In our last conversation.
Well, though, this is a.
He's answering the phone.
Oh, so, um, would you make clarification about that, Ms. Davis, please? Where is that in the budget and what is that amount?
I'm looking for the verbiage.
Um, the total annual compensation under this agreement shall not exceed the amount included in the city's annual, um, budget. And of course, it has to be budgeted every year. It's a five-year contract, but it has to be in the budget every year. So where is this in the budget?
So most of their fees are based specifically on, um. Their actual activity and it's directly backed to the, um, applicant. So above and beyond that, then it becomes a, uh, question of. So above and beyond that, then it becomes a uh question of how it's budgeted within that and it would be under professional services and is currently twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars. That's.
So.
That's in the professional service.
Is that just for this professional or is it for all professional services?
Professional services under this particular.
Um, professional services under the uh, the general fund.
Yeah, Department fifty-three under the general fund.
So um, that is yeah, twenty thousand. So this will be any bills that the city pays um to this company will be under that. And what about the gentleman that um the other gentleman that has been, pardon me?
So most of the bills.
Hmm.
We need to work so a building permit come in at a percentage rate of the cost of the construction.
Mm-hmm.
According to our ordinances.
Mm-hmm.
That a plan review and any other professional services can be paid for and or billed directly to that particular process.
Anyway.
So billing, some billing will be reflected in the consulting. Most of it will be in just general services as an offset to revenue. So if somebody pays two hundred dollars for a building permit, but it takes five hundred dollars for a plan review, then what they are going to pay is that seven hundred dollars and that five hundred dollars is then directly to AEC West. So it's a.
So the thing that passes the city.
Even, even if they have an engineered plan, set of plans.
The city is required to review in the, in the process of issuing a building permit, all plans regardless of engineer. We prefer that they be stamped engineered drawings.
They still have to be.
They have to be reviewed.
I think that's.
So if they are stamped and engineered, then that fee is substantially less than if they aren't because of the level that's required, you know, through the details.
So ideally, if you have an engineer architect that's already done those plans, it shouldn't take much plan review.
Correct.
That doesn't guarantee it though.
No.
Any further discussion?
And so he's, is he already working?
Yes, ma'am. We initiated a conversation based upon some timelines that were presented for another project. Once we, once you approved us moving forward with the contract with AEC, then we moved forward with a joint conference call with a particular party on Friday, the twenty first. And they have been trying to work through um a permitting process for this particular project. Otherwise, we would have held it up another two weeks. I, I didn't hear that that was what he was wanting to do at that point.
You didn't what?
I didn't hear that that was something the council would prefer to do, so we moved forward of a conversation.
Is that, I mean, should we not have contracts in place before we're actually hiring people regardless of what it may be? I would, I mean, kind of a gamble. I mean, what if we, what if we don't approve this? I mean, I just think that contracts should be in place, whether we have to have a special meeting or whatever to approve it before we're actually agreeing with people. But I mean, it just kind of sounds like standard practice to me. Just comment.
Are there any local people that are working with this company that you know? Are they any local or public? Or where, or will they all be driving from?
It's, it's my understanding they may have a building inspection inspector that's closer than uh, over Denver.
Hmm.
But I don't know from a scheduling standpoint, the next available is out of Carrow Springs.
So we can assume that any of their travel fees will be coming out of that twenty thousand dollar professional fee.
Right. And or the percentage of building permits, so.
But I mean, obviously those costs, fixed cost to travel, which is quite a bit of money at sixty-five cents a mile. I mean, depending how many times they're here, that. And what happens if we hit that twenty thousand before the year? And we saw projects.
We have building permits, opportunity revenue as well. So I'm not sure how you want me to respond to that. The good news is, is if we exceed the twenty thousand, that means you have substantial number of projects on the.
Well, I believe you could set and adjust the maximum amount that's budgeted for this if it comes close to it. Might be more of a question for Mr. Moore. Or for Mr. Moore, whether you could just set and adjust that budget maximum for it.
So are we going to hire our own building inspector? Or we may not need their services as much?
To be perfectly honest, I do not see that you're going to be able to hire a building inspector that has the capability to, to plan review for complexities of commercial properties. Uh, from a liability standpoint, I would not be at all comfortable. I, and I think that's why we are where we are now.
But a building inspector, we could hire a building inspector to do all other.
Absolutely.
And are you going to do that?
Absolutely. That's the avenue that we're approaching.
Mm-hmm. And that, that's budgeted under fifty-three, five thousand. I, mm-hmm. Okay.
So have we posted for that job or are we gonna post for that job?
We will. We're trying to stabilize departments enough to be able to do that and bring someone in that doesn't have to swim his way through his paperwork.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion.
We have one.
Call for the vote.
And any additional comments? Off of the vote?
Please?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Ms. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Ecker?
No.
Mr. Beal?
Oh.
Under new business approval of Sweetwater Group LLC retail marijuana cultivation license renewal, I would ask a motion.
Motion to.
Can I confirm something first, please? Did I hear a no from Mr. Ecker and Mr. Beal?
Affirmative.
Yes, she did.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mark, was that you, Mr. Martinez?
They approve the uh Sweetwater. Is it Sweetwater LLC license renewal?
Do I hear a second?
We have no choice but to approve it, correct?
If all the paperwork is, is there, then it's just a renewal.
Yeah, so this goes before you as a licensing authority to approve your hearing on this because there's been no prior violations and there's nothing that's concerning the license. Um, right now, uh, Mr. Colander told me that there's some SOPs to the effect that most of these can be done administratively, can be administratively approved, be administratively approved by the clerk. However, that's not the verbiage in the code. It still has to go before you. So that's another point that I want to bring up in comments and directions is to draft an ordinance that matches up with those SOPs to amend the code so that these can be approved administratively and don't have to come before you unless there is um a violation or anything else concerning in the background of the management of its owners, um, which is standard procedure for any licensing authority. A lot of these are just approved administratively. But since under the code, you do have to approve it. That's why it's before you right now.
I'd like to. I mean, even if it's a blank approval, I'd like to see him. I'd like to keep up on who.
Okay. Is there, is there a second? I have a second. Motion on the floor by Mr. Martinez to approve the Sweetwater Group LLC, second by Ms. Mays. Discussion, Ms. Mays?
I just, like you said, I just, I feel a lot of times when stuff goes administrative, you don't know what's going on. So so I feel more comfortable that it will, will be known what's going on. It's believed as the way it is.
So would I be able to ask just a, a question so that I see that I understand?
Sure.
Um, this, so on the renewal application information, what it says to me is that the license expired on four fifteen. So it um, and we, it appears that we received it on the nineteenth. I do believe that there is a thirty day grace period if it's in the approval. But is there any? Is there any penalty for them for not applying um on time? Uh, we didn't even receive it until the, the uh nineteenth is the way I'm reading of that. Is that, am I looking at it correctly?
So that might, but that might be a question for Mr. Colander.
Okay. Do you see what I'm looking at though?
Yeah.
Okay. Hmm.
Good question.
Um, I'm not so, I understand part of it, some of this is generated by the state.
Mm-hmm.
So um.
Allow me to interject.
Thank you, sir. We're kind of waiting for you to.
Oh, you were, huh? Uh, the state generates all of this. This is even sent to us by the state, just so you know. Okay? Um, there is a letter that's in your packet. It indicates that it's a letter from the state of Colorado that indicates on April fourteenth that the letter was written. The purpose of this correspondence is to inform you that should the renewal license investigation Seawater Group continue past date of expiration for the current license, the license will be administratively continued by the state authorization pursuant to blah, blah, blah. The only thing that you're responsible to do as a council when it comes to these license renewals is do they have a violation? Have they paid for their business license? And have they paid the four thousand dollar city renewals? That's it.
Well, so it looks like it doesn't expire until May twenty-sixth and it looks like they were supposed to have turned their application on April eleventh. If that was directly fielded by the state, they might have had to pay extra for for sending it in after that date and that process was.
But they probably paid it to the state if they did.
Okay. Thank you for this application.
With those fees by like four thousand dollar fee, what do we do with those?
That money goes into the general fund. So we don't have a police department at the moment, but if we were to have, that would be a, an excellent source of funding the police department. They fund the general fund.
So what do we do with it now? What do we do with it now?
Send it.
You do with the general fund, honey?
Just send it.
Yep.
Any further discussion, Mr. Beal? Director?
No.
Sykes? No. Martinez? Ms. Mays? Off of the vote?
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Ms. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Ecker?
Yes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
If you'd like to know.
Yes.
Uh, under number seven, approval of the water plant maintenance and operation requisitions in a motion.
Motion to approve the acquisition of the stern pack chemical in the amount of thirty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and the replacement and repair of the mixer in the amount of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Question was made by Mr. Martinez and a second by Mr. By Ms. Sykes. Discussion?
Can you tell me where this is in the budget, Mr. Moore?
It's in the water fund. It would be O three, five, three facility department. And uh, that will be under the chemicals in there.
O three, five, three.
Hmm, chemicals. Um, we have budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, is that?
Yeah, that's the place we're looking for.
And to date, we've spent thirty, basically thirty-four thousand, thirty-three percent. Am I looking at that correctly?
Yeah, we um, in twenty twenty-one, we ended up needing to purchase three stern packs across the year, which is unusual for prior years that I saw. Uh, we were normally buying them at two times per year.
Mm-hmm.
And it frequency seems to move ahead, so anticipating the next budget should maybe be padded for four of them, just in case issues come up. So um uh, this year is, is getting different from the past record.
So I'd like to point out that the mixer is part of the solution for that because it's the mixer that actually is in taking that, that polychromide and mixing it into the water as it enters the plant. The condition of that mixer, I think, has minimized the actual uh agitation and required that we actually introduce more polychromide into our raw water than we normally would. So we're hoping that with that correct injection of the right chemical and then the actual operation of a mixer in a appropriate manner that we can get back to wa- backing out of that stern pack expense.
So if we've approved both of these, um, we're gonna, we're in, as of um what, the fifth month, we're gonna be basically pretty close to max our budget.
Which has apparently happened the last couple of years. We've exceeded the budget at the water treatment.
Why didn't we up that budget?
Well, we, it is up a little bit. You know, how, how, what are you gonna estimate is gonna be the cost for the year? Is it gonna be a good year or is it gonna be that? So, so um, those are estimations. It's not like I've had five years of track record with the city to do a a more in-depth review, but um.
But we don't have like five years of historical data, what we spend?
Well, that.
Well, that's actually incorporated with five years of the budget. So yes, we did look at the historical data, but it's, conditions gotten worse.
So I think one thing that you should be aware of is that we've already had conversations with both RCs for the water treatment and the sewage treatment plant to try to identify those major concerns that would impact our budget next year in terms of equipment so that we can be better prepared for uh, a budget preparation. So. So unfortunately, this is.
So on the purchase requisition, it says forty-three thousand wet pounds on the Camira or however, say that. First of all, contacts need to be fixed on that. Um, but it says minimum quantity forty-five thousand. So and then it, so do we need forty-five thousand or do we need four three thousand? That's two thousand nearly two thousand dollars difference. So if we're approving the thirty-one thousand, that's not the right number.
It, it has a minimum, what it's saying is that it has a minimum
Of forty.
Pound, you know, a minimum weight or what.
So that's what I'm saying. So how does that get transferred to a city of Walsenburg? Um, purchase requisition and it's only at forty-three thousand? And they're saying you have to purchase a minimum of forty-five thousand.
Well, if they give us the, did they get the, the um the dollar amount, if they give us the code on it, the dollar.
This point, does the per, per pound, does point seven three seven per pound?
Yeah.
And then this was dated twelve thirteen, twenty twenty-two. So is that price still good? Cause it has um, we will make every effort to hold pricing, but provide for thirty days notification if there are any changes. And this is dated twelve thirteen, twenty twenty-two. So do we even know if that point seven three seven per pound is what it.
Only thing we can do is reconfirm, but it doesn't matter what it costs. Now that I have it. So the only thing we can do is ensure that. Have it, so the only thing we can do is ensure that. Recall that. Make sure that the price up is updated.
Well, we need to confirm, is it forty-five thousand minimum? Like where did, I'm, I don't know who wrote up this, the PR here, but. Like, why did they put forty-three thousand in there? Is that all we need, or?
Yeah, so if you calculate it, yeah, so if you calculate point. Seven three seven times two thousand.
Almost two thousand dollars, close.
So, I mean, we probably better make the decision, we have to. To buy it, so do we want to approve it with that?
But for forty thousand.
We don't even know if that's the right price though, cause this was dated twelve thirteen, twenty twenty-two, and it has a thirty day. Like, holding the price, that price could be higher.
You could approve it for forty thousand, and that gives us that.
Oh, I was looking at this, but you're saying.
Yeah, I'm looking at it there, yeah.
Yeah, I, I see that, yeah.
So. I think not to exceed forty thousand, and we can confirm price and. Quantity.
Hold move.
Second.
Second?
I know you send out notices about drinking quality and stuff. Prove that, or is this just a? It's just a normal part of the operation?
The unfortunate thing is, our plant's twenty-three years old. And I'm not so sure this is the original mixer on it. Um. It doesn't, it affects drinking quality, the, the quality of the water, but it's on the very front end of the process. It's actually as the water comes in from, um, the reservoir. It goes through this pump and this polychromide is added to it. And it, and then it's injected and, and introduced into the tanks and into the bottom of the tanks in that process. So without it, it makes it extremely difficult to have a quality of water through those, that filtration system. So, the. Short answer is absolutely, is water quality. The longer answer is based upon where it is in the process. It takes longer to get to the quality of water, but you can't have it without it, that's the first domino.
So is there two different quotes for the mixer? I see P and A pump install, and then I see SPX flow, that also has a mixer, so is there two different mixers?
It's. Same mixer, but it's an independent company who does the installation on it.
So if you see the mixer, the mixer and then the epoxy reco pipe. Freight and handling, right, and the twenty-seven thousand.
Right, but on the S B X flow, it has twenty-seven thousand, one ninety-five eighty-two.
Ah, I know what that is. So he, he got two quotes on the actual mixer.
Hmm.
And in the first quote that you have in.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I forgot that he was doing that, under the P and A pump. He got a better price on the pump, and it's actually installed. Whereas. The X flow would have cost you a couple of thousand dollars more.
So that, so that X P S, that's just.
That's a, that's a, this additional.
Thank you, cause that was gonna be my next question, is if we get more than one quote. Okay, got it, so we're going with P and A pump install and repair, and they are not charging a separate install.
Correct.
Included in there.
Right.
So we'll note that it's.
So do we need to note that in the motion? And theirs is good at thirty-four?
Yes.
Okay.
For the questions or comments? To reiterate, the motion on the floor made by Mr. Martinez.
Oh, there isn't, there is an install fee of thirty-five hundred.
Right, but it's included in the total price.
No, it's up. I just, I, I see it.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the acquisition of stern pack chemical. Uh, in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Replacement, repair of the mixer. In the amount of thirty-four thousand, three fifty-five, ninety-four, uh.
So, wait a second, so. So S B X flow, their mixer was twenty-five nine. P and A is twenty-seven, there is a separate remove and install. Of thirty-five hundred, so I don't. Is there's cheaper? Wait, you take out the freight, I mean, their freight's the same. But the pump itself is twenty-seven. Twenty-seven thousand and X P X flow is twenty-five nine.
We have twenty-five nine and freight and handling.
The freight and handling are the same on both, you see where the pump itself is cheaper with S P X flow.
But they don't do an install.
They don't do it, but we can't buy the pump from them and save. Save the money there, we're paying the same for freight.
But we may not, so then it becomes a question of if you're gonna nickel and diming it.
This is thousands of dollars, not nickel and diming.
And, well, but it doesn't include an install from the other company, so if you're talking. Small amounts with the company that you're purchasing a pump from, they're doing the installation, repair, replacement. Versus. Having then to buy a pump from someone else. Ensure that it's there. You're probably going to pay more for the labor cost if you go back to the P and A pump company. Because they're relying on you to get the materials that they need.
Well, one of the things is what is the warranty gonna be if we have buy it from one and they, somebody else, uh, somebody else installs it? To me, that's, I would be more fearful of that, it's what would it be, Veronica, thousand dollars, basically, it's about thousand, twenty-six. Thousand versus twenty-seven thousand, a thousand dollars, and if, if, uh, P and A pump. Is doing the warranty on all of it, right?
Right. By some clues, um.
I would say. I would prefer that. Have one warranty under, uh, all of it.
You know, part of that, uh. They're doing some epoxy and recoating the pipe and stuff, or, you know, is, when they go to install it, uh, has that price? Understand?
Yeah.
There's twenty-five hundred dollar fee there.
So the motion on the floor is for. P and A pump. In the amount of thirty-four, three fifty-five, ninety-four. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, Miss Steph.
Mr. Beale?
Yes.
Ms. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Ecker?
Yes.
Under by mayor and city council comments, directions and actions. Reale, do you have anything this evening?
That's good.
Director, do you have anything? Sykes?
Um. Yes. So how do we, as a council, know? The projects that are open that you're working on? Um. Yes, it would probably be under open. Um, and what is this, what is going on with them, I see on the, the year one report, but if you're ongoing. Um. Are you gonna give us an update every? Council meeting, is that report gonna be updated every council meeting?
Are, are you referring to the development report?
Hmm.
So we initially planned once a month, and we're open to suggestions for needs. It's kind of a. It's an ongoing process, one of which we've talked about extensively. Um. That's something that we'll keep bringing back to the council probably sooner than later, based upon a, that kind of information. But some of these other things are, are. Moving targets and there, a lot of the conversations are very preliminary, so you'll see in there that. In an attempt to have some anonymity for people until they want to divulge. Uh, what their intents are.
Mm-hmm.
There's some very. We'll probably continue in that way until we come to a point where we actually have. Uh, something concrete to, to bring to the council and, and make something.
Well.
Remind you that, um, that Wednesday, we do have a meeting. Um. We have, um, a variance, a variance request, uh, to, um. Remediate, if you will, uh, a variance on, uh, the size of a tiny home so that it's. Uh, we have to provide a variance because it's not what's required over ordinance. We're gonna have a, um, variance request for, um, electric. Charging station.
Mm-hmm.
For first choice. Uh, which will have to come back to the council on the sixteenth, probably for a, uh, sure. To allow them the opportunity. It's about a foot of space into the, uh. Um. Right away. But also that evening will be an introduction. Uh. Of an individual who is proposing a housing development that's pretty exciting. So, I would certainly encourage you all to be available. Wednesday night, you can zoom in, uh, Zoom is available and, and perhaps.
David, could you repeat, is that tomorrow or a week from Wednesday, please, thank you.
Week from Wednesday. The tenth. Mr. Martinez?
I'm gonna go. Oh, you mean, but that's good enough.
I'm leaving anyway.
Well.